The Zoom is being recorded. And this is available online at Minuteman.media. Also on Comcast, Channel 99. We're expecting a fair number of attendees. We are in webinar, well, no, we're not in webinar mode. But we would ask that if we do get to a number of 500, which would be really unusual. But if we do, if people who are not here to make a public comment might be able to switch over to Minuteman Media, that would be helpful. I suspect we will not reach that number.
So while there's a fair amount of background noise, can people mute themselves?
Yes, please, everybody mute. And, excuse me. The Court. Go ahead.
We'll call the Concord Public Schools School Committee to order. I'd like to note that we are, needless to say, living in unprecedented times with unprecedented anxieties that really run the gamut. We are sensitive to this range of concern and this desire for more certainty than we might have today. We are going to ask for everyone's continued best efforts at civility and respect as we sort our way through this together. We are in this together. We want to appeal to everyone who is participating to assume good intentions on the part of all parties, including people with ideas very divergent, perhaps from your own or mine. Because this school committee thinks that we will be the better for it if we can continue to honor those kinds of traditions of public discourse as we navigate the tough days ahead. If you listen to Superintendents around the nation, a common phrase that is very frustrating to many is, "The best answer to the question is that's under discussion." But I want to assure you that we say that here, too, in Concord and Concord-Carlisle, and it's not a dodge. It's the truth. And so if something is under discussion, we would submit to you that there's a reason for it, and there will be the best possible decisions emerging from those continuing discussions. So with that, we want to thank you for participating today and appeal to your continued goodwill and working with us with these school committees. Thank you.
Thank you, Court. Let's do a roll call. Rainey.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Astafi.
Here.
Out.
I'm here.
Here.
Johnston, here. And I want to. So our first item on the agenda is public comment. I'll ask that people who would like to make comments use the raise your hand option on Zoom. And I do want to just say a couple of things before we get started. One, typically, we have three-minute limits on comments. If we get a significant number of hands up, somebody's got some sound in the background. If you could mute your, your, thank you, microphones. If we get a significant number of hands raised, we may very well lower that to a minute. We'll just wait and see. If you are speaking and comments you plan to make have been made previously, please just indicate your agreement with those and add anything new to help us move things along. I do want to say that we are getting input from many people, many places. A lot of parents, a lot of students, a lot of teachers. The school committee does not feel any undue pressure from any one of those groups. We, as Court just said, welcome people's input, and we will be the better for it. And we, when it comes time for us to make decisions, we will do so having the full understanding of everybody's input. I will assure you, we read what we get from email, and we listen to people who reach out to us in the community. So I hope you can trust that your voices are heard. I do want to make a comment that there's some conjecture about teachers applying undue pressure or heavy pressure on us to go remote. I certainly don't feel that. The teachers have been working with us in lockstep to prepare for teaching options in the fall, whether they are remote, which some will be absolutely, or hybrid, and, you know, as many of us hope, a combination of both. And our hope is that we can continue to all be civil as we approach this and recognize that, you know, we're all working toward the same thing, which is what's best for our children. And we would not be here doing this if that were not the case. We may differ in opinions, but we all, I believe, have the same end goal. So with that said, I don't see a lot of hands, but I will, why don't we, and if I get somebody's name wrong, please correct it, and I apologize. Melinda Gambino.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Is there going to be video, or is it just going to be the audio?
I'm not, I think you can put your video on if you want.
Oh, okay. I wasn't sure how to do that from the options here.
If it, you may not have it. If you don't, then we certainly can hear you and everybody else can.
Okay. Great. Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't look like there's a video option. I would love to say hi that way. Thank you.
Well, then, excuse me. We're going to promote you to a panelist for a moment.
Okay.
We should be able to do that.
All right.
We just don't want to, there we go.
Okay. Well, great to see everybody. And thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon to the school committee. I have a comment that's basically from several parents sent a letter earlier today. And so I think that I just want to convey some of the sentiments that were in the letter. And it was signed by several families. I think that you should have received it by now, and I was going to ask that it could be entered into the minutes of this meeting. So the purpose of the letter really was to encourage the school committee to vote to move forward with the school reopening plan this fall that proposes a hybrid model within classroom teachers. And then there are some additional suggestions about safety measures that could be considered. But first, I wanted to say thank you for the tremendous efforts of the administration, the teachers, and the task forces that have been working all summer to put together this plan and to carefully address safety so that students, faculty, and staff could come back to school this fall. So the students, I can, I can tell you, students, so part of the other reason I wanted to make a comment today is the school committee should know how excited and eager the students are to get back in there into the classrooms, and families are very eager, too, to see their kids back in school with their teachers. So, you know, really, I understand how difficult the decision this has been to decide what to do in the fall. We're forced to really find the best option amongst a set of less-than-desirable options. But honestly, the remote learning option, which we experienced, you know, this spring out of necessity, was really, was really tough for when teachers and learners were thrown into that situation. And large numbers of students became disengaged under those conditions. And really, the most highly motivated students can do okay under those conditions, but we found, you know, all over, through talking with each other, parents and families, that, you know, it was hard to thrive under the remote learning conditions. So really, what we want to say is, you know, that we haven't seen an explosion of cases of COVID-19, and people in Concord and Carlisle have been relatively diligent about following the safety precautions. The virus is not going away in the foreseeable future, and it's going to take some time for all the risk to disappear completely. So in the meantime, I think it would be really detrimental to sever students and families from the essential service of providing public education. It needs to be acknowledged that educating our young people is a primary and vital function composed of many, much more than just acquiring academic skills. Without the personal interactions and the ability to engage meaningfully with teachers and other adults in a school setting, our young people will not fully realize their skills, identities, and interests. And we must remember that our commitment to, also, our commitment to mental health and the well-being of the, of our young people. So I think the continued and prolonged social isolation that goes along with remote, fully remote, really threatens to undermine mental health and chances for success in our school community. So I know that there's been a lot of careful attention, you know, to considering the safety of students. The letter that we, that was sent also outlines some other steps that I don't know have, you know, probably have been discussed, possibly. I know the task forces are working really hard to incorporate, you know, any ideas that, that could help, so I won't really talk about that. But I'm asking, you know, and families are asking, "Please don't abandon the school reopening plan that involves in-classroom teaching and learning in favor of a remote option." I think it's just far too detrimental for, you know, for the students. So that's basically the content of the letter.
Thank you.
And I wanted to just add, from a personal note, you know, as a former school committee member in Carlisle, one of the things that we would always remind ourselves when an important decision or discussion came in front of us is, you know, what is best for education and for students? And, you know, I think that we need to ask ourselves that question here, too. Undoubtedly, the pandemic presents special circumstances that, and unique circumstances. But at the end of the day, you know, we're really here for students and for education. So thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. I will note there were 82 people signed onto the letter we received, so thank you for sending it. And it'll be, I just want to, a couple of things that come up here as I'm looking at Q and A and stuff like that. We will, all letters that we get, email or physical, are public record. And we'll note in the minutes that we received correspondence, probably by the numbers of, which currently is about 35 emails about this topic. And this is public comment. It's not a forum, so we won't be answering questions. I've seen a couple of questions pop up here. If you want to make comments to us, that's certainly welcome. And, you know, some of those things, I'm sure, may get answered as we go through the meeting here today. Samantha Jadu, probably butchered your last name. I apologize.
We can put her on screen for a few, for her comments. And as, as Wally said before, we are listening intently, hearing intently, and we would ask everyone to not perhaps belabor points that you think have been expressed very well already during the meeting, but certainly the floor is yours. Hello, Samantha.
Hi. I'm glad to be promoted. Thank you for promoting. I want to make a couple of quick comments. One is that I have been kind of glued to the news, to the, you know, to the local government data as well, so, but not everybody is like, you know, you guys or people like me. So I feel like it's important to send our constant reminder how important it is to not let our guards down in terms of social distancing, wearing masks and all that. When Dr. Hunter did that, right, in April, March, April, May timeframe, I felt that was very effective, and I, you know, me and my friends read every single one of those emails. Number two is that let us know how we can help. You know, if you, we only have about a month for school reopening. I would like to find opportunity to volunteer. If we need to configure our new computers, you know, just train us on that. If we need to make masks, you know, face shields, all of these things, let parents know how we can help to make this possible.
Thank you.
Thank you, Samantha.
Thanks for the offer. Next would be Zoe Jackson.
And I think Zoe should be on, if we have her correctly. Okay. So, hi, Zoe.
Hi. My name is Zoe Jackson. I'm a senior at C.C., and I'm the vice president of our grade. I'm here today because I'm hoping to share with you the comments of hundreds of students and just voice with you some of the things that we have done as students during this sort of reopening time. So back in July, student government sent out a survey to students to ask them their concerns and their opinions on the reopening plan, specifically the alphabetical hybrid of the plan itself. And then after that, 150 seniors signed a petition to ask for some other plan to be considered and then voicing their similar concerns. And then last Monday, 105 students emailed the school committee to further voice these concerns. And I'm just here to explain that the voices of the majority of the students are saying this. The reopening plan that splits kids alphabetically is isolating them from their support systems, and it's not just about friendship. I think it's important to note that we are concerned about safety in every capacity of that, but we are just trying to make sure that our voices are being heard, and we come up with a solution that meets the needs of students as well as the safety concerns for teachers and students. Governor Baker has led his response, the COVID response, using data. And today, he said that the majority of towns in Concord should be going back to school, at least at a hybrid because of the data. And what we have done as students is try to give you data to voice our concerns and to come together to try to come up with alternatives. What we are asking right now is that you do the same, that you please share and allow us to help in coming up with solutions to try to get us back to school in the best way possible. And we are truly trying to push that when we are arguing that the split, either alphabetical or a complete virtual option, and how damaging that is to our mental health, being isolated from our support system. At the very least, we are trying to argue and sort of offer that we are allowed to switch cohorts if that is the plan that is moved forward with sort of like, you know, one from the first half of the alphabet and one from the other half, just so that students aren't completely isolated from their support system. We are trying to work really hard to have the best year possible, especially seniors, because this is our last year. We thank you for everything that you have done and to ensure a safe return to school, but we want to make sure that our voices are heard, because I think that is, that is the reason that we have a school committee and teachers trying to voice and advocate for our needs. So, thank you. That is what I've had to say, but, um, yeah.
Zoe, thank you very much. And we hope you convey that to your colleagues at CCHS. Thank you.
Thank you, Zoe. And you're absolutely being heard. The input from last week's, prior to last week's school committee meeting prompted some additional thinking about things we can do to, we certainly went back and looked at if there was a better way to do something about cohorts. The, we're still working on that, but, you know, I'm going to say the same thing I said last week, because it doesn't look like it's changed. I don't know that there's as much we can do about that in particular, but we are looking at several ways to allow students opportunities to spend time with, with their friends, with the people that, as you say, your support system, and we know that, we understand that. And we want you to have the best year we can possibly provide in these really challenging times. So I hope that, I hope you can convey to the, to your student body that we do hear you. We are here first and foremost for you, and we are doing everything we can to balance the safety necessary, the ability to teach necessary, and your ability to, to not only enjoy this as best you can, but feel safe, be supported, and, and get through this very difficult time as best you can. And we will be very focused on that latter piece throughout the year, regardless of how we end up, whether we get to hybrid for the whole year or part of the year. If you're remote, we're going to be doing everything we can to, as the way we can, to support you. Thank you for coming on today.
Thank you.
Thank you, Zoe.
Don't see any other hands.
Wally, I just say, there's a few questions in the Q and A, and if people want to email me, I'm happy to answer those. I don't think we'd do it right now, but I'm happy to answer them.
Good. Thank you. So, and I think to that end, if people want to keep sending us questions, because we'll have them recorded here, and I don't know what they are, but please, if you could also send an email to Dr. Hunter, that'd be great.
Wally, I'd just say something that I think, so the director of the National Zoo yesterday was talking about the reopening plans for Smithsonian and phrased it really nicely that I think might, might help Zoe, might help other people understand that there's not an on, like the way he said it is, it's not an on-off, it's a thermostat, right? And, and we have to know that we're going to be making adjustments, and we're going to learn what works and, and that, you know, this is going to take a collective, collective understanding that we need to start somewhere and work towards adjustments as we move forward.
Thanks, yeah. And we, you know, one thing we do know is we'll be making adjustments for a long time to come, I think. We do have one other hand, Madeline Pohler.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
Okay. I'll be very brief. I'm speaking as a Concord resident and a parent and teacher, wearing, I guess, all those hats, but these are my views only. I am very willing to go back hybrid because I believe fully in the hybrid model. I want to see my students. I miss them. And as a parent, I know that when I got the news from my kids' colleges that they were in person, I was so happy. And I want to do that for my students. What I want to ask, I guess, of this committee is perhaps to partner with Concord Police, the town government. As I drive around town and I go, I am working like crazy this summer, as a lot of my colleagues are. I have an 89-year-old father that I'm probably not going to see a lot of this year, and I'm willing to make that sacrifice for my students. And I want the students and their families to understand that in-person learning is going to take a lot of sacrifice on their parts, too, to make it work. And I want that to be an ask of people. I see too many parties happening in town. I see too many people gathering without masks, without social distancing. And I understand, I have three teenagers, as the mental health piece is important, but there's a difference between going to a huge party, you know, with 50 people, and maybe having a couple of kids with masks in your backyard six feet apart. And we need to change that narrative. That, that matters. And so I just find myself, as I drive around town and go out for runs by White Pond and see tons of people, feeling really disappointed, I guess. I want to be focusing on teaching and learning. I want the people on this committee and our unbelievable administrators to focus on teaching and learning, and we need help to make all of this reopening happening, because I think it is sort of pure luck that we aren't Falmouth and Chatham when I see what's going on in town among the teens, and I have a pretty good read on that. And I love them to death, but we need to do a better job, and we need help.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madeline.
Appreciate that input and hear you loud and clear. Carrie Patel.
So, I think you're on, Carrie.
Hello. Thank you. Hi, I'm Carrie Patel. I'm a parent from Carlisle, very new here. I have been serving on the operations committee for the, what do you guys call it? Maybe, I'm in Carlisle, whatever the task force is. There's a lot of names running around. But, so I'm just going to have a bit of a different view than most of the other people I've heard, but so I'm just going to read a little thing I read at Carlisle. One, first, thank you for everybody who's given up their summer, especially the school committee, as, you know, you're all volunteers. I know this has been a, I personally have been in a lot of Zoom meetings, so I can only imagine how many you guys have been in. This has been a difficult year, to say the least, and I honestly believe there's no good or right answers to the dilemmas we are currently facing. As a nurse, I've worked in the Carlisle Health Office for years, as well as over 13 years in a hospital setting, and I have a bit of experience dealing with infectious diseases. And because of that, and I cannot in good conscience send my boys back to school this fall. These are very challenging times, and more often than not, what is good for us is not always what we want. And I know we talk about Carlisle and Concord as being bubbles, and in many aspects, that's true. We are a bubble. We live in a bubble here in these two towns. However, viruses don't care about bubbles. And as a friend of mine just beautifully put it, "We are all dry under this big umbrella of ours, but it's still raining out there. And if we take that away, a lot of us are going to get wet." I personally am not willing to see anyone in the CCH community, as well as the Carlisle community, get wet. We ask a lot of our teachers, and they give a lot of us every, to us every day. But asking them to risk their lives so our children can go back in person is not what they signed on for, and it's not what I believe we should expect from them. I know a lot of people were not happy with how the remote learning went this spring, but please don't let what was put in place as emergency measures cloud your judgment about what a wonderful, what our wonderful and creative teachers could do with our children this year online to ensure that everyone is safe in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you.
Thanks for your work on the task force. So I now see no hands raised, so why don't we move on? Comment. And we have minutes to approve from, they're joint session minutes from June 30 and July 13th. Could have a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved by, for both districts?
Thank you. And any comment or request?
Note that there were two corrections and two occasions. Our faithful scribe referred to Dr. Hunter's possessive, and we dropped in an apostrophe. So that's how carefully we checked the minutes. With that one exception, I think they were perfect.
Great. Thank you.
Did we have a second, Wally?
I don't know that we did.
I'd be happy to second for both.
It's just joint. Well, it is, it is both, isn't it? Sorry. Yes. So we have a second. Anybody else? So a roll vote. Outh.
Aye for both.
Astafi.
Astafi, aye for region.
Out.
Aye for both.
Rainey.
Aye for both.
Um, St. and I for both. Correspondence. Um, as you've heard, we've had lots of correspondence through our last meeting, and we had a lot at the meeting before that, and we welcome it. We know how challenging this is. And it's important that people are able to speak to us and that we can speak to you. Um, the, uh, we did have, just to give you an idea on numbers, uh, 35 emails since our last meeting, which was Monday last, uh, around school start. And, you know, to both sides of this sort of discussion we're having, um, there were three emails, uh, focused on anti-racism, uh, one which was a personnel matter and a miscellaneous, uh, email. So, and needed here, but we did have a letter, one of the 35 emails was a letter from, uh, signed by, at the time it was sent to D to, uh, parents. Chairs and liaison reports. Um, somebody want to talk about the Finance Committee meeting? I can do it if you want. Cindy, I think you were there, you wanna? Uh, so just give a quick update here. Um, there was a finance, Finance Committee meeting last week after our meeting. We actually, excuse me, presented at it, Laurie presented at it, uh, and Jared, and, uh, uh, they were effusive in their praise for the work that's being done by the administration and the teachers and everybody involved in this effort we have going. Um, and recognize the fluid nature of our, financial situation this year. Um, they did recognize, uh, after we were done presenting and after they had, uh, had some further discussion about some things, the, you know, the challenging situation for taxpayers, uh, at this point in time. Uh, highlighted some numbers, I do not have them written down, but, uh, significant numbers of unemployment among Concord residents and the, uh, difficulty of merchants and, uh, other businesses in, in town. Um, and what that does to tax rolls. Um, we will talk, uh, a bit later, but they are attempting to keep the, uh, the tax increase on, you know, at or just below 3% for this year. Um, and as such, have a request of us, uh, which we'll talk about as we get into, uh, into the budget numbers. Primarily theirs, uh, they will, there are a series of, of hearings, public hearings coming up. I would recommend, uh, a view at the Concord website to get beat on when those are, and they're all Zoom meetings, when they will be. Um, I will add, uh, it's not FinCom related, but, uh, you may have noticed Governor Baker, uh, put the 50-person restriction back on, uh, meeting sizes. That does not include legislative bodies, which was, is what our town, town meeting is, uh, uh, exists. So, uh, at the present time, town meeting is still scheduled for, uh, 12th of September. Um, and everybody should have received, uh, a flyer from the community in the mail, outlining some of the details of that and.
I believe it's September 13th. I was, I stand corrected, Wally. Sorry to interrupt. September 13th.
Thank you. Um, and, uh, it's worth taking a look at that because there will be some, some differences. I would urge people who want to see presentations to tune into the public forums, because that is the only place that we will be giving presentations. We will not be giving them at town meeting. Um, there'll be materials there to review, but there will not be, uh, presentations.
Wally, am I correct? Uh, the public hearings will be next week, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, with the schools, Tuesday, all three nights at 7:00. Can somebody fact check me on that? Does that sound right?
That's correct. We might need to look at our start timer, something for the 18th, right?
You mean for the school committee?
Correct.
In light of the 7 o'clock public hearing?
Correct.
And everything's available at conquermed.gov for information on those hearings. Sorry to interrupt, Wally.
Yeah, no, I just pulled it up here. Um, we will be, we actually will have a, uh, our budget public hearing, uh, at the beginning of our meeting next week too. So, uh, yeah, there is a supplemental public hearing on the 17th, uh, Select Port and Finance Committee. And our meeting on the 18th.
And then I think the 19th.
Finance Committee Supplemental Public Hearing. So it'll want to be done by then. Um, I might, we might want to talk about forcing a little earlier meeting for ourselves on Tuesday, and then, uh, Planning Board Town Meeting Public Hearing on the 19th.
If we are done with FinCom, Wally, I'll, I'll move on to policy if I might.
Yes.
We met last week. You have a first reading coming up later in our agenda on some COVID-related policies. We decided to prioritize those. And we have our next meeting this Thursday, uh, 4:00 PM. And, uh, for a link to that meeting, one would go to the school website, School Committee Section, Policy Section, and one would find our agenda and the link information to join us. It's a public meeting Thursday at 4 o'clock.
Thank you, Court. Any other reports?
Yep. Can I just jump in quickly and mention, um, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, mostly my thanks to Court for stepping in for a couple of weeks as chair, while I'm less accessible than usual, um, which goes along with a, an apology in advance in case I, in case I lose you or anything. I'm in a place with a lot less reliable access than I thought I was going to have all week. So, um, just apologies in advance in case I end up, uh, missing you all for part of this, but hopefully this'll, my connection will last for the whole discussion. So, thank you, Court, for stepping up. I really appreciate it.
Our pleasure.
Trying to be away, things are pretty quiet here.
That's right. Not much going on, I know. Figured it was a good time to disappear. You guys can handle all my work.
Okay, any other, uh, comments about meetings? Okay, let's move on to the Superintendent's Report.
You know, Wally, I think we can combine my report with the reopening updates. Um, I think that probably makes the most sense, given where my time is going.
Go right into it.
All right. So, I did put a few slides together to hit, uh, cover some of the highlights of the work of the last week, essentially. Obviously, everything is continuing throughout, and we're working at both the district and building levels now. So let me, uh, it's very hard to do both, so give me one second here. Um, what we, what I want to do is, and this is gonna feel a little bit eclectic, but that's kind of the nature of the work at the moment. Um, let me just screen share so I can hit the presentation button. Uh, so that we're bouncing between topics because we have so many different balls in the air at the moment. So, sorry about that. I lost my screen share. It's switching on me now. All right. So, these will feel, like I said, a little random, but they're, they're not. They're all connected around the reopening plan. So, the building-based task forces are operational and meeting constantly, uh, weekly essentially with work going on in between. They're working on arrival and pickup, making maps of the building for student travel, uh, lunch at the middle and high schools. Schedules are being reviewed, lockers, backpacks, all those types of processes are getting discussed. Um, supplies and materials, we're certainly, uh, strategizing that and how kids will be managing those pieces. We did put out last week the individual remote learning plan option for families. Um, as of last night, when I pulled this, uh, you can see the data coming in to us with a fairly even range to it. Um, that remains open. We had asked for a deadline of today, so we're gonna capture it today and really use that for our planning purposes. It's very synced up with what we had for soft data a few weeks ago. Um, so that proved to be quite predictive of where we are. We also put out the request for help with transportation and have had a, a very positive response as of last night. Also, when I pulled this, uh, you can see, this is per student. So certainly some of it is families, but, um, 100, 1,052 students have transport available to them through their homes or otherwise. So that's gonna be substantially helpful to us, especially at the elementary schools where we're bringing all of the kids in. So once we get, um, probably through the late part of this week, we'll be using these numbers to build our roots and rework our, our transportation process. The HVAC consultant has been to all of the schools, uh, over the course of the last week. We are expecting the report very quickly. Um, Jared's had a couple of, uh, question and answer sessions with a consultant as he works through it. We'll be able to turn around, uh, also very quickly to take care of the recommendations that he makes. And we also had an industrial hygienist in the schools today to work with us on collection of air quality, et cetera. We've been eagerly awaiting, as has everyone, updates to the Athletics, uh, MIAA. Based on information I got today through some of the leadership of MIAA. There's a bit of circular peace going on. Desi's supposed to be giving MIAA information, and things just aren't getting totally planned yet at this point. They've officially postponed the season until September 14th. We do know there's a lot of moving pieces here. They've put out hypotheticals, so we're awaiting decisions before we can act on anything, um, including moving seasons around, going with the sports that are allowed now and postponing the others. So we just have to stay, I think, open and available and attentive to this. Um, there is an MIAA COVID task force that's been meeting, and then they meet with the Board of Directors, and there's a loop through, um, with the, with the Desi leadership as well. So, a lot of moving pieces there, and perhaps, hopefully, decisions coming shortly. This has probably been the biggest time I've been spending this past week is working with the staff in terms of what their options are, their level of need, and really getting pretty creative, um, in an effort to meet everyone's, everyone's hopes and, um, even more than hopes, safety requirements. So just, I think it's important that we name how some of this is going to play out. All of the teachers will not be able to return as normal. That's a fact of, uh, their own situations, whether it be medically related or childcare related or whatever. Um, so we're gonna need to work through a lot of pieces here in the next month so that we're ready to roll. Um, some folks are taking leave of absences. That's certainly within the choice set. There's more legislation than ever, both the traditional legislation and COVID-related legislation that allows that. Um, we are a little out of the box here and giving teachers a remote teaching option where they can be at home. Um, and our really high-quality teachers are still accessible to kids, even if they aren't at a place where they can be in person with them. Um, for whatever reason, that is an affit to their personal, uh, situations. And I will say, I'm not just allowing this for anybody and everybody, and I, um, am working through a very tight process of documentation and pro, and procedure with them as to who gets this option. But there will be teachers, and this has really been something I've offered at the secondary level, because I don't believe there's a way for elementary kids to access their teachers if they're at the school and the teachers are home. But we're gonna, we're gonna work through some of these options at the middle and high school, um, because otherwise, we're gonna be finding a lot of long-term subs, and that's not the best for kids, I don't believe. Um, and I also think we'd be putting ourselves in some fiscal challenges there for sure. So, this is, this has proven to be an interesting decision and one that I think is going to be very positive. But it is, it is outside the box, and I think people are gonna need to know that, um, there will be some remote teaching going on, no matter what we do here. So, uh, we did have participants in the early retirement package we offered, thanks to your approval, a couple of weeks ago, uh, essentially at the elementary schools. And whether we're, unfortunately, um, we have had already to lay off, uh, some cafeteria staff at the middle and high school because we're, we're just overstaffed for what we're expecting, um, to be serving and providing. The hybrid model only has half the kids in the building each day, so naturally, there's not as much opportunity. So this is going to move, um, throughout, I think, and we're trying to take it a bit at a time, knowing that the big picture could change as well, and, um, been really intimately working with teachers based on what their own personal situations are. It seemed to make sense to me, if we're gonna give families that choice, that we work as hard as we can to try to do right by teachers in that mode while still serving the kids well. I've been, uh, regularly meeting with the Concord Health officials, and I just wanted to provide some updates on that, um, at a high level. We've been working through thresholds and scenarios. Uh, you'll see the bottom note, and obviously it was already mentioned, the governor's releasing more enhanced community data in terms of, uh, COVID rates at the very, very local level. Um, that by all means is meant to help inform school-based decisions. We met with the commissioner earlier today. Uh, we've also been working with the Concord Health officials to look at scenarios of what happens if we have a case of COVID in the schools. We have Desi guidance, we have CDC guidance. We met this afternoon with the nurse leaders and the principals and really talked through how this all plays out, and, um, we are being more conservative in some places than, um, Desi would even recommend in terms of days away if kids are, um, or staff are positive COVID, um, and some other processes and protocols, which we're, we've got those in draft form. We're gonna have the principal share them with the task forces tomorrow for feedback, and then, um, we'll be making our way to bring those to the staff and the parent community, and of course, the school committee. It's a very long, never-ending cycle of review of the protocols from all of the organizations that govern us, reviewing of the positive COVID response and contact tracing. The health officials will take over the contact tracing. If there's a positive case, we will just be collaborating with them. Reviewing the quarantine protocols and what that's gonna look like. That also translates into remote education or teaching, perhaps, um, if we have people being quarantined. So we're working through all of those. Uh, the health officials are gonna be developing, and maybe this will now be in conjunction with the governor's data, a local data dashboard that we're gonna be able to post weekly that, um, gives very specific counts and numbers as to what's happening in Concord and Carlisle. And probably most interesting, and something I definitely wanted to put on the committee's discussion tonight, was, uh, the, the option to ask for COVID testing prior to the return to school. Um, I met yesterday at their invitation with the Emerson administrators and the health, Concord Health officials, and we really were just bouncing around how Emerson might be able to support us. I think I've mentioned a few times that, uh, there is no state plan for testing. It's not a Desi discussion at the moment. Um, and yet there's a pretty big interest in having better information and testing ahead of school starting at minimum. So we have an opportunity. Um, one's an opportunity, the second is an option. Uh, the first is an opportunity to work with Emerson. They are collaborating, the Broad Institute in Cambridge, um, who has become a, a go-to locally. Their testing capacity is significant. Uh, they've been working with the universities and a number of other institutions. They um, have reached out to school systems, including us, but to manage it on our own is very, very expensive. So, Emerson's using them to process their testing, COVID testing. Um, so we do have an option that we could work with Emerson to set up testing for staff. Uh, most insurance, according to Emerson, is, uh, really collaborating and positively responding to the COVID testing. I do think for staff, we could afford to cover any that isn't insurance-covered and have all staff. have all staff tested before the return to school. We really bounced around at length, the wish, really wish for students to be tested before coming back. Emerson's very interested in partnering with us. They don't know that they could take on all of that capacity of 3,400 kids. However, we could ask that of kids. I've worked with our local district council. She's been writing draft policy for other local districts. Desi is not mandating the test, but the local district can. And really, the language in the policy would reflect that without a COVID test in hand, the family or student would end up working remotely until that was provided. So I think it's worth discussing. I know it feels, it feels dramatic to me, but I also, we're in a health crisis and I want to set us up for success. And I think at minimum, everyone being tested prior to return would give us a much higher likelihood, although the rates are low, but it would certainly increase, increase the likelihood of success. So no decisions tonight. I just wanted to put that on the discussion table and ask you to bounce it around a bit. We can continue that over the next week or two. But a new opportunity is there, and Emerson's support would make, I think, a big difference in, in options. With Broad, they are able to turn testing around in 24 hours generally, which is very different than what's happening in most of the other settings of almost at least a week to come back. So, so I posed that with their blessing. I bring that to you and with district council giving input for us to just start discussing.
Thank you, Lori. Committee members, questions of Dr. Hunter?
So just going to testing first because that's where we stopped. I'll work backwards. I'm very excited about the prospect of testing both students and staff, and I would even like to talk about testing, not just the beginning, before the beginning of school, but after the beginning of school. We've got significant amount of CARES money, both on the town Concord side and on our side. I know we probably have needs that maybe have already exceeded the amount of money we have. But I think we should talk about it as an option. Because I think the, the fact that many people are returning from out of state and/or taking their college students outside of the safe zone and coming back, people are coming back from being away. So I think it's important to probably test, you know, 14 days into the cycle, if not sooner. So I just, I'm throwing that out there as a, you know, I'd like to get the pricing on that option, and if, if it's all doable.
When I met with Broad a few weeks ago, they, the number they gave me, which we'd have to confirm, and I don't know the scale at which Emerson's able to use their scale and scope of how they get the number down to $45 a test. What they offered us at the time was complete testing of all staff and students regularly. At $45 a test, just because of the volume of people, that's a pretty big price tag for us to manage. We get a bit of, we get some of the benefit by using Emerson without having to own the whole process all by ourselves.
Did Broad want a long-term contract in order to offer that pricing?
Broad is doing, probably, yes. They weren't, look, there was wiggle room there to talk on options, which we didn't totally pursue at this point. The pricing is about scale, so I would leave it at that without having any more direct information yet.
Are the tests, are, is it the nasal, is it the swab? Is it the saliva test, which kind of?
Yeah, it's the swab, but not the one that goes way, way, doesn't touch your, you know, brain. It just goes in your nasal. And it's not the antibody test, which have become kind of a mixed viewpoint of the medical folks, so.
Is there any option for, you know, that sometimes people sort of cluster groups together and take a sample, you know, take like five people's samples together to?
Yeah, we could talk on that. I asked, yeah, sorry, I asked Broad about that. They really didn't direct us in that way, but that doesn't mean we couldn't revisit the conversation.
It's your tests, so.
If we partnered, families get tested, would it be in school or would it be done privately at Emerson, at their physician's office?
Yep. So if we were to work with Emerson, right now they're running the tests without a doctor's note at their urgent care centers and through the ER, which is obviously more complicated. They have hopes in the next few weeks to get an outdoor drive-through testing capacity set up. So right now that isn't in place, but that's on their list to do.
They were going to do 4,100 tests for us, would they? Probably try to do something on one of our locations.
Well, it really depends on whether with the, the staff, we could work with them to secure a couple of dates at one of the walk-ins or at the ER. With the students, it's much more complicated for the vast, for the size. I think we'd have to talk about whether we want to try to ask Emerson to take all of that on. It sounded like they have some capacity for some of that. I don't know that they could do that regularly. So I guess the committee would have to give me some direction on what to go back and ask of them. It sounded like they'd be willing to consider it as a startup plan, but I don't know if they'd do it off all the time, just with the number of kids that would be.
Yeah. Test $285,000.
Right, exactly. Which is what Broad offered us, and Broad would come onsite, but at $200,000 a week, that's a little unaffordable.
Just in terms of affordable or not, if we work with Emerson and we're asking families to do this, do we have a way of providing financial support to those for whom that would be a problem?
Absolutely.
You know, if we have, if families have three or four kids and then they have to do this a couple of times, that can add up pretty quickly.
Sure, yeah, of course. And I guess that's the gift of Emerson is with a partnership with them, we'd probably even be able to arrange direct billing to us.
I think they're, correct me if I'm wrong, but the question was posed to the commissioner about requiring this. And the, the fight back is that we're operating a public school and it's a right, and we would be unable to require as a prerequisite entry to the building, for instance, a test.
The, our legal counsel, because we have a remote option now, which wasn't always the case, as long as we provide access to the remote option, you, we as a, you as a school committee can make a local policy and prohibit access to in-person learning if that's a direction you want to go.
Goodness.
So Lori, you said that we might have two weeks or a couple of weeks, I think you said, to work on this. In that time, could we ask of you if committee members agree that you with Emerson sort out in a very practical way what timetables would look like for decision-making? Because to Cynthia's point, if there's a pre-test and a, a post-test, a after we're underway test, what would the prior work require of us? Because we're going to need time for decisions and then lots of communication even before all the logistical challenges occur for those 4,100 people.
So there, in any testing, they're going to coordinate with us. They asked for, depending on how many people, if it's the staff, it's probably a little less. If we're trying to do a bigger scale event, it's probably two weeks that they would need for their, their end. So we could back, back up from that, and we'd have to make decisions in the next week or two at the latest.
And then if people were to get tested, you would want the test to be within a certain acute, like short timeframe before they enter school, right? Are there, is for what those hours would be, like 48 hours before, 72?
We could talk more on that. I know the governor's travel order is a 72-hour window.
And then I have another question. Where would this data go? It would go from Emerson to like Jared?
Yeah, I don't know. I don't think we'd be housing the data. I think people just have to have proof of the negative test, so.
Okay, got it.
Yeah.
And Lori, the positive tests, if there were any, they would follow, they would follow the tracing and they would end up in our public health nurses for Concord and Carlisle hands to follow up and communicate that information?
Yes, yes, which happens through the software automatically.
Other questions?
I'll just, I'll just comment. I think this is coming out in the discussion anyway, but I think this is well worth considering, and I think it's worth us all putting some time and thought into it. To Madeline Fuller's point, when she said, if we want to get everybody back into, everybody back into school, it's going to take commitment and sometimes giving up things on everybody's part. And this is certainly, it seems like it could be a realistic ask of people. If we want to get back into school, this could be a way to enable it more effectively than we've been looking at. So I'm, I'm not saying definitely, because obviously there are a lot of questions out there still, but I think this is well worth looking into. So thank you for bringing it, Lori.
Now, I'm going to say thank you. The Emerson administrators reached out to me because we had been so generous with PPE in March, and they wondered what they could help us with. So it's been a real community effort.
Would we be supportive of Dr. Hunter following up as early as tomorrow, simple or, you know, as soon as possible to let Emerson know that we are favorably disposed to looking at all the practicalities of this to inform decisions in the very near future?
And I, I just wanted to add, there is, there is that psychological part to bringing testing and even discussing testing because it makes that re-entry to the building and the obligation that we all have as the community members to keep each other safe. It's a very good reminder that we will be arriving, we will be testing, that we really have to make sure that we make the right choices as families and students to make sure that we all safely re-enter, that teachers feel safe to come into school to teach, and other students can feel safe to arrive in school. So it, it not only gives you the baseline of, you know, how our community is behaving and doing, but also it brings in that additional reminder that we have to really make this as a concerted effort to, to do well as a community.
Yeah.
For our students who are not coming from Concord or Carlisle, do we want to think about how, providing transportation or somehow organizing, facilitating?
Yeah, I'm sure we can work that through. Mr. Nemech is here for one of our later items, so we would certainly support them in that, make sure they have the same options easily available to them.
Emerson has a lot of partnerships with hospitals in the city too, that maybe they could utilize, pretty substantial ones.
Good point.
And I just wanted to add that Carlisle also brought this up as a question in our school committee yesterday. So it's not just Concord thinking about testing.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Oh, I have questions not related to testing. Just in regards to communication in general, you know, we published, you know, you presented an incredibly detailed plan, but now there's going to be new information. How are we going to communicate that? Are we going to start putting up a Q and A?
Yep. So we've got, the website's built, so we're building Q and As. We've got drafts going at different levels that should be ready over time. Each building's also beginning to really put out communication, whether it be their own webpage or otherwise. The handbook, handbooks are getting drafted, so that'll be the, that's really the tool that we're going to use primarily, but we would want to give some process updates along the way. So we will continue to put out information as we have it and make sure that it's a work available to everyone as it goes. So the Q and A is probably the next thing. I think at each level, we're going to have a different version of that.
I've got a couple of items, if I might, Wally. One, I, I want to note that you, you said the words "we all dread," which is that some layoffs were necessary. And we would want all staff, notably those who have been laid off, to know that we're deeply in their debt, and this is something that pains us, as I'm sure it does you, Lori.
Oh, very much. And through all of the other moving pieces with leave of absences and remote teaching and all that, there may be different opportunities. So we're doing one thing at a time. We knew the cafeteria wasn't an option for them, but it could be there's another opportunity. We're still not that far along yet.
We're gratified you're thinking that way.
Yeah, thanks.
In terms of the Concord Health protocols, would you anticipate that the school committee would see some of these drafts in the coming days, or would that be in a week or two or in the coming day?
No, I think, we met right before this meeting, so I was going to share them all with you after we got off tonight. And then I think by next week, we can probably bring them for some public discussion.
And I'm certainly not somebody informed very much about air quality, but I'm curious about the analysis that's being done. Is this a standard HVAC analysis, or is there some COVID rubric that gets used? Or can anybody speak to that? I don't know much about it, but I'm curious.
Sure. Jared's been speaking the most to the consultant. Are you able to do a high-level view of that?
So what he's done, so we have two, basically two consultants, one's putting together a report and one right now is working with Russ, a hygienist. So what they're doing is they're going through every single building and just giving us ideas on what is needed. We're doing a bunch of tests. In addition, he's doing sort of training. So once the report is done, he's going to give his recommendations on, you know, air purifiers or, you know, exhaust filters. And then what he's going to do is he's going to give us an outline of what we need to do to, to, to keep this going. It's going to be in a PowerPoint. And it's, we, we had a conversation with him a week ago, and he hit the ground running. He's probably already put 40 to 50, 40 to 50 hours into it. So we should have something concrete by the end of the week. That's, that's my guess. And then you have another report to compare.
Would it be, because you've got a hygienist involved as well as an engineer, is it safe to say that there's going to be some purification perspective as well as air turnover perspective to this analysis?
Yes.
Good, thank you. Okay, thank you. Wally, thank you. That's all I've got.
Dr. Hunter, while we are still on that ventilation question, I don't remember, and I, I don't remember what the regional high school building, looks like it's a brand-new building. Often enough, there is no possibility to open windows. Do we, do the teachers are able to open windows, windows to allow for fresh air during the September, October months as we are re-entering the building?
And that's exactly the, the work that he's doing, is looking at what the system's built to run with and then looking at what the options are. So I expect that'll be part of the report that we get back. You know, the newer buildings, probably the high school in Willard especially, are really built to run without the windows open. So we want to know the quality of the air, given that, that the systems were designed that way. And I'm sure he will weigh in as to whether working with the windows closed or open is best in those environments. And in all the schools, he'll be giving us that same feedback.
Yeah. And the newer buildings, he's recommending actually not to have the windows open.
Right.
In Ripley, potentially, you know, the two middle schools, that might be an option.
And there's a lot of good science behind that, because of the nature of these air-handling units and what they can do today.
Right.
So we'll see all of that soon. I'm delighted. Thank you very much for being so proactive about that.
Thanks.
I have another question. So as you were going through that very quick presentation, the teachers that are remote and will be working from home, is it, just a clarification, would that be for the teachers while the students are in a hybrid model? Or is it for the teachers when we are in remote, just remote learning, that they will be able to work from home all throughout, even if the students are not in a work from home all throughout, even if the students are not in a building, in the high school building?
Yeah, so we're, we're going to try this. We're going to give them the option to work remotely while the kids are in the hybrid model. We can always change our minds and go to the long-term substitute plan if it doesn't work. That's where we would go if we didn't have any other, any creative interest in this. But given the quality of our teachers and the work that they've done this summer in remote learning, and the fact that half the kids are remote anyway, we'd really like to give it a go to start the year. Again, we can work on long-term subs if for some reason we don't feel like it's working successfully. People are really excited to, to try this. These teachers didn't want to just go take leave and not stay engaged with kids. And so for that, we're really grateful. Fiscally, it's a better option as well. Otherwise, we'd be probably paying double salaries. So it feels like it could be a win-win. It's a little bit of a, you know, experiment, trial and error. We're going to have to stay really close to it.
And, and Dr. Hunter, that's not to imply that adolescents are going to be lacking adult support in their homes.
No. So we're looking at that now. Both the middle and high school administrators are reviewing those needs. We may need to bring in some other support staff just to help with supervision. But again, it's, it's hopefully best for kids in terms of academics and fiscally, it's still positive.
Okay.
If we have no other questions on that topic, we have Kristin and Andrew are with us for item D. And I was, I'd like to get a motion to move item D to consideration now.
I'm moved for both.
Second for both.
Any discussion? We need to do a roll. Booth?
Aye for both.
Bout?
Aye for both.
Staffy?
Aye for region.
Wilson?
Aye for region.
Rainey?
Aye for both.
Chanced an aye for both. Thank you. And we'll move to that. Item D.
So I'll open it up and I'm going to do the slides for them as well. In, trying to be sure we're sharing updates and information on our cultural competency, equity and anti-racist work. Kristin and Andrew are here to give you some of the highlights of the work related to the strategic plan, talk on what's even happening this summer, because it's been a busy summer on all these topics, and then foreshadow what's to come. So I will get the slides up for them. And Kristin, I don't know if you and Andrew want to?
Yeah.
Get open while I do that?
Yeah, I'll start and then Andrew's going to introduce himself as well. So most of you know me already as the Director of Teaching and Learning. And this is a topic I'm so happy that you had us come to, to speak on. It's been a professional passion of mine for the 30 years of my career. And in Concord, I've been leading the Cultural Competency pre-K to 12 Committee for maybe five years. So it's very exciting for me. And we work with a lot of great outside consultants on this topic. Dr. Paula Martin has been one of our speakers to talk with parents and, and just been consulting with us over the years on all kinds of issues related to this topic. And Jeanne Thompson Grove also has been working with us. And I, I also just wanted to mention, very atypically for me, I, I come to this work professionally, but I also come to it personally, which might be kind of surprising, seeing as I'm a white woman standing in front of you. But I have two adopted children who are non-white. And it's been really eye-opening for the last 17 years to watch how they are treated differently than me in the same situation. So, you know, that, as long as my professional interest has really become my personal interest in improving the world. And I'd love Andrew to have a similar, what brings him to his work. He's, he's been doing our MECO Director for a number of years now and doing a fabulous job at it. Andrew, are you there?
Good evening, everyone, and thank you, members of the school committee, for allowing us to share some of our district work around cultural competency and anti-racist, anti-racism work. This is, I believe, I'm going into my third year as MECO Director for Concord Public Schools and Concord Carlisle Regional School District. And, you know, I think from a personal standpoint, I guess, you know, what brings me to this work really sort of dates back to my childhood, you know, growing up in Ghana. Just the idea of racism really didn't exist for me. My neighbors were from Holland, were white, and just the idea that they were different than me and, and, you know, based on their skin color really was something that never crossed my mind until I came to the United States. Started school in Seattle, Washington, which is a very predominantly white state, and, and, you know, lived in Bellevue, Washington. And I remember, you know, fourth grade, first day of school, you know, I started the school day being introduced to my peers. And then later on, as all the, as all the kids, you know, went out to the playground, you know, I made my, you know, my way to the playground as well and immediately noticed just all the kids, you know, you had white kids in one corner, black kids in the other, Asian kids in another pocket. And I just remember feeling so confused that I ran back inside in tears, because I really did not know at that age. I was 10 years old. I did not know how to fit in. It was completely new to me. And, and since then, really, I've just been fascinated with this work and just really understanding, you know, how, you know, how folks can really get to, get to a place of understanding that we have more in common than, than, you know, than our differences. And so this work, you know, is definitely personal for me. And, and, and since the start of, you know, me being involved with MECO, it has definitely been life's work almost at this point. You know, this work never ends, to be honest with you. And, you know, each, each time I engage with folks around cultural competency work and anti-racism work, it's, it's a level of excitement that, that I, that I have towards this work. So thank you for having us.
Thank you. Thank, thank you, Andrew and Kristin, both for your personal stories. We only hear the, the surface, but we can well imagine some of the pain that underlies those stories. And the fact that this was your, your American experience, Andrew, I think pains a lot of us to, to, to hear and to, to own. So thanks for saying it.
So we wanted to make sure that the students' voices were present in the conversation. So Andrew pulled this quote. He's done lots and lots of meetings with lots and lots of students as the violence over George, over the violent murder of George Floyd has occurred. And so here's a quote that you pulled, right, Andrew?
Yes, I did. And this is from our Rising Senior, Joseph Van. And he goes on to say, you know, over, over the course, you know, and he, and he's a student that has actually been in our MECO program for 11 years now. And Joseph says, you know, "There have been many times where I've been the only black student in the class. I remember being in English class and they were talking about slavery in a video, and I felt so uncomfortable because I'm the only black person there. At the end of the video, my teacher was like, 'Okay, well, Joseph, how do you feel about that, about the video?' I would have loved to speak about it, but I just felt so put on the spot and felt so isolated because I know, because I knew no one would understand what I have truly said. And I can't look at my black friends and say what I want to say because I'm in a class full of white people. I didn't feel a connection, like they would truly get it." And, you know, I, you know, prepared a little brief statement, and I'll try to be brief. But, you know, it is said that, you know, "High-end community awareness and engagement can often sort of help break down barriers, dispel stereotypes, and provide opportunities for education and activism." As you court, Booth, I believe you so eloquently put it two weeks ago at our roundtable discussion. And, and that often, you know, our students of color find themselves asking the question, "How can you teach me if you don't know who I am?" Often, students sort of find themselves sharing experiences like what Joseph described. You know, our hope as educators and parents is for all students, and especially our students of color, to feel connected, to have a sense of belonging in your school. As educators, we must acknowledge who our students are, explore the way they think about themselves, the way they feel, their views by the world around them, and the characteristics that define who they are. In the last couple of months, we have been reminded that racism in this country is still very much alive. Communities are not immune to acts of racism. Educating our faculty and staff, students, parents, and the community at large to be active, anti-racist in their daily lives, I believe, remains a priority and a critical undertaking for all of us, for all of us, if we want a more inclusive, equitable, welcoming, and anti-racist community. We have heard Dr. Hunter reiterate over the course of the school year, that our district's commitment to anti-racism work and cultural competency is very much ongoing. And you will hear more in the presentation Kristin and I have prepared for you this evening. In addition, our district's effort to create and programming and initiatives for educators, students, and the community helps them to avoid their own unspoken biases, or at the very least connects them with others who are deeply committed to anti-racism work and the work of cultural competency. Lastly, you know, I truly believe that we are all capable of being change agents, allies, and accomplices. It is my hope that we continue the conversations around cultural competency and anti-racism, so that we may develop a new level of consciousness towards how our everyday behaviors around race and equity impact the ability of students to thrive. Kristin?
Yeah. So we have four pillars of our strategic plan, and the third pillar of that is to create a collaborative and inclusive culture in the schools and community that values diversity and recognizes the contributions and uniqueness of each learner. And then within that, we have, if you could just advance the next slide, we have five strategic initiatives to try to reach that goal. This is a five-year plan, and we're in about the third year of it, or we're about to start into the third year of it. So the first one is to develop a shared understanding or a vision statement of what diversity means in Concord and Concord Carlisle Public Schools, and develop district procedures for applying the understanding to our work. The second piece is about professional development for our staff with a focus on cultural proficiency and inclusive practices that meet the needs of each individual student. The third initiative is to increase our culturally responsive curriculum and students' knowledge and understanding of a wide variety of perspectives and learning styles. The fourth is the one we probably get the most questions about, which is to continue to actively recruit and maintain a diverse staff in the district. And the fifth is to partner with students and families from Boston to increase opportunities for them as members of our community. So we're going to go through each of those five areas. There's about a slide on each one. There is so much to say on each one of them. So if we leave something out, please bring it to our attention. And I should say, while Andrew and I lead the district-wide pre-K to 12 Committee, each of the schools has initiatives working on cultural competency within their, within their faculty meetings and so forth. So you'll, you'll see a lot of events that happen, particularly at the schools. So here is our shared understanding as written by the pre-K to 12 Cultural Competency Committee in the first year of the strategic plan. "We strive to be a more culturally competent community. We support our diversity of race, gender, religion, national origin, gender identity, color, ancestry, sexual orientation, and ability. By our choices and actions, we promote all members to feel recognized, respected, and valued. We have set our intention to be responsive, proactive, and empathetic to all facets of culture and diversity. The goal of continuously developing our cultural competency is that it will enable our students to develop the values, skills, and behaviors needed to effectively interact in a culturally diverse community, both locally and globally." So the next initiative is on professional development. And this is one area where I feel like for a district of our size, we're really hitting it out of the park, because we have over 20 courses that we've offered internally, free to all of our educators. There's a link there to all, all of the different courses that we've entered. Some of them are teacher-led book discussions, others are experts coming in and working with staff. So there's lots of that. We also have two, we have met more than two, but two community partners that have really helped us. One is the Ideas, which is out of EDCO, which is the Empowering Multicultural Initiatives. They run courses for us. And we have, at times, required people to take those courses. Another is, another partner for us is Primary Source, and they offer a lot of, especially, I would say, culturally responsive courses on students who don't have English as their first language, different holidays are celebrated, and so forth. So, and I just, in terms of this slide, I thought, well, what's the Big Bang? Like, what's the really exciting thing that we did? So not last year, but the year before, we got a big grant from the Concord Education Fund, and we brought in three enormous speakers for all of our staff. So our opening speaker that day was Dr. Beverly Daniel Tatum, probably one of the best-known authors in this subject, because she wrote one of the first books that addresses schools, and is probably the most famous, "Why Are All the Black Kids Sitting Together in the Cafeteria?" So she was phenomenal speaker. And then towards the middle of the year, we brought in Principal Baruti Caffeli, also an educator, author, and really focusing on at-risk students and black males. And then lastly, who I actually went to college with, Dr. Derek Gay, I didn't know it at the time, International Consultant on Issues of Diversity, Cultural Competency, and Global Citizenship. And he really helped us sort of challenge a lot of our narratives about ourselves. So we're really happy about what we've been able to offer. And just as a little aside, we put back out a message to all the staff, to anyone who wanted to join the pre-K to 12 Cultural Competency Committee. And now we have about 150 people coming to meetings regularly. So it's a pretty big initiative, and a lot of people care deeply about it. So our culturally responsive curriculum, this is really, again, a hard, there's so much going on. But let me just serve, start at the top. We have outside experts who help us look at our curriculum. And on a daily basis, if things are coming up and we need some extra support or help to, to think about that, we have that and we are using them right now. And we have been interested in, since the strategic plan came out, in doing a cultural competency audit. And we wanted to do it last spring, but things were a little busy. So now we're talking with the Kingston Bay Group. They did a good cultural competency audit of the Wellesley Public Schools. And we're also interested in And we're also interested in what Menko Inc. is offering to us. So, that's one way for us to go. And then, a big thing that we did, as you know, sort of curriculum is overseen from the district level so that we have coordination. And we had, maybe two years ago, the social studies review. And what we did was look at our curriculum and say, how are students of color who live in Concord or Boston or Carlisle, how are they represented in our curriculum? And we found it really wanting. So, we partnered with both the Robbins House and the Concord Museum to create, especially when we were looking at pieces of Concord history, Boston history, and then American history in grade eight and grade ten, we created new curricula there. And as many of you know, there's trunks that are brought in. In eighth grade, they're called the abolitionist trunks, and it's about the movement to end slavery. And it's really powerful for the kids to, I'm glad I mentioned my kid earlier so that you weren't surprised when you walked through. Anyway, so the abolitionist trunks, so the kids can actually look at and see actual artifacts making that history come alive. So, we're really thankful to the Robbins House that funded most of that work, and the teachers, of course, who did it. And then, we have a social-emotional curriculum at every level. As you know, at elementary, it's Open Circle. At middle school, it's the home base, the advisory program. At high school, it's also the advisory program. And so, in that, all of those curricula have recently, I would say, in the last three years, added lessons on how to have those difficult conversations about race or religion or culture in a way that the person asking a question can feel safe, and the person who might answer that could also feel safe. So, to try to move us along that continuum of understanding. And then, the last area that we often get questions about in terms of our curriculum is really about the literature that we provide to kids for their reading, both free reading and whatever are chosen for books that we follow. So, we've had, I would say, five years of restocking and reviewing our libraries to make sure that we have diverse books with both diverse authors and diverse main characters. And so that, our goal is that every child feels represented, that they can see themselves in some hero or heroine in a book. So, that's kind of the curriculum in a nutshell. Yeah, thanks.
Right. So, you know, as a district, we are proactively recruiting, and of course, having discussions on how we maintain a diverse staff. And, you know, I shared, you know, this quote here is by Leah Schaefer, who is at the Harvard Graduate School of Education, and she conducted a very small focus group to capture sort of the experiences of teachers of color. And in her research, she concluded that "One of the most powerful supports a school can give a student of color is a teacher of color. Understanding the experiences of teachers of color is crucial. Retaining these educators from year, from one year to the next requires superintendents and principals to be intentionally inclusive, to hold high expectations for all staff, to provide excellent training and support, and to actively appreciate the extra mentoring and support and support work that teachers of color often do." Kristen and I have created a district-level hiring committee that also involves Dr. Paula Martin and Yolanda Volpe, who just retired from CCH's last year. And a lot of our discussions around how to best sort of, you know, go about recruiting a diverse staff happens in this committee. We know that the work is not, is not easy. You know, when we post our positions out, most of the time, we are, it's hard for us to really get a pool of candidates of color. And we know that, you know, Concord is not the only school district that has these challenges. Other districts, of course, have this challenge as well. But really, you know, what we have begun to do is take a very creative approach into how we go about recruiting candidates of color. And one of the three things that we have done, actually, just within this past school year, is we have, we have some, three key partnerships with NAPSE, which is the National Alliance of Black School Educators, NEMNET, which is the New England Minority Network, and Handshake, which has more than two hundred thousand employers who use Handshake to find qualified students for a variety of jobs and partnerships. Now, our goal with sort of these three partnerships, you know, is really to, again, expand, sort of cast a wider net in terms of, in terms of our candidate pool. NAPSE, you know, was founded back in the nineteen seventies, and they currently is the nation's largest network of African-American educators. In addition, NEMNET was founded back in nineteen ninety-four, and their mission specifically is to help schools, to help public schools, identify, attract, and retain teachers of color. Now, with Handshake, it's a little bit different because what happens is that, you know, say we have a post-in for a grade-one teacher, right? We take that post-in, and we share it on Handshake. Once we share it on Handshake, we actually become connected to colleges and universities all across the United States. Now, we can also, within Handshake, target HBCUs, historically Black colleges and universities, who are able to view our post-in. And usually, the person who approves our post-in for that specific university is often the director who oversees the career services department for that university. And so, our post-in can pretty much be shared, you know, across states. And again, when we target those specific historically Black colleges and universities, we're able to then really target, you know, educators or candidates of color who might be interested in applying for a position, for vacancy that's available in our district. So, again, so, you know, we're going beyond the traditional sort of protocols and how we go about hiring candidates of color. And this work especially, I'm excited about because, you know, I definitely see the impact this can have in our district. And, you know, I heard a little bit about sort of the impact from, from a conference that Kristen and I actually attended that was hosted by Desi back in the fall. And the town, I believe, out in Western Mass actually had a very similar sort of program in where they brought in graduate students of color from New York. And these graduate students of color were able to spend a week's worth of their sort of, towards the end of year, of their graduate work, they spent a week in the, in the, in the school district, and they were able to be paired up with another faculty member to really expose them to sort of how, how the community runs, how the school district runs, and also to be able to be exposed to sort of what happens in the classrooms. Now, the graduate students who came to that community, again, you know, being completely new to that community, were able to, at the end of their experience, were able to share with the, with the community that they were actually interested in some vacancies that were available at the time. And there were about thirteen graduate students who went through this experience. And this particular town actually ended up hiring twelve out of the thirteen graduate students to come work in their school district. And so, they sort of went above and beyond, you know, the normal practices. And another fact that was shared in the conference that Kristen and I went to is that the town actually provided housing for those thirteen candidates to be able to have them remain, you know, in the, in the, in the community, in the school district, and really get that full experience. And I think that's, you know, I think that's something that we can explore in the, in the, in the near future.
I'm just going to pipe in, as I turn the slide, I've hired three teachers of color in the last two weeks. So, we're, some of our efforts are starting to pay off.
Absolutely. Student engagement, this word is, is very exciting to me because, you know, our students are, are, you know, the next generation of young, young men and women who are going to hopefully, you know, change the course of, you know, some of the historical events that have happened in our past, right? And so, I have a quote here from Kalise Winter, who is also a Rising Senior. And she says, you know, "This is a time where the youth needs to absorb anti-racism materials so that we can prevent these examples of racism from happening. We need to teach our youth so they can learn." I think Kristen mentioned our Open Circle curriculum, which happens in our K through five in our elementary schools. In addition to Open Circle, we have our annual EDCO and Ideas Student Leadership Conference that students attend every year. Let me see here. A little bit about sort of the EDCO conference. The conference, which is, happens annually, engages students from diverse racial and ethnic backgrounds in conversations on issues of racism, stereotypes, discrimination, and allied behavior. Through the conference, students build community within and across racial and ethnic groups, recognize stereotypes, different forms of discrimination, and racism in our schools and society. Our Celtics Playbook Initiative, which we launched, Principal Cameron, Justin Cameron, our middle school principal, we launched this program two years ago, and we initially trained roughly thirty middle school student leaders to really engage in an anti-discrimination and bias prevention program. The Celtics Playbook Initiative really is a program which resulted in the creation of a social playbook, per se, which inspires students to engage in dialogue on race, religion, gender, disability, and sexual orientation. And ultimately, it equips our students with the tools to intervene in challenging social situations. Now, our first year, we were able to train thirty middle schoolers. In this past school year, between myself, Principal Cameron, and Gretchen Carr, who just graduated CCHS, we each actually trained roughly twenty-five students on our own. And so, you can imagine that, you know, going into the next school year, our hope is to increase, you know, that exposure to be able to train more students through this Celtics Playbook Initiative. And I think our students that are now Rising ninth graders, you know, at the end of our training this year, those students who are now Rising ninth graders were more than happy to sort of come back to the middle school this coming school year and be student leaders in the training, which I, I think will be phenomenal. Let's see here. So, this is a long list, and as you can see, we have our RISE Club at the Middle School, which stands for Race, Identity, Social Empowerment. And this is at the middle school. This club is open to all Concord Middle School students who are interested in having discussions about race and equity in our school community and the larger world. Students usually show up on Wednesdays for about an hour and engage in conversations around said topics. We also have our ADL Three-Day Peer Training Program at the high school. And similar to sort of our Celtics Playbook Initiative, last year, I believe, we were able to train roughly thirty-five students. This year, we were almost at fifty. And so, it's, it's very incredible. And this picture, at the top there, top right-hand corner there, is sort of towards the end of our training program where students were able to take a ball of yarn and sort of spread it out in a way that connected all of their experiences. And it sort of brought all the students together at the end of that training. New this year, for the 2020-2021 school year, our Intersections Club have been extremely engaged with our students, utilizing our local radio station, the WIQH radio station, where they have held a number of conversations recently, actually, on cultural appropriation, colorism. And these students have just been phenomenal in the sense that they have also held a Black Lives Matter peaceful protest in town that was widely supported. We had over sixty volunteers to help these students with that peaceful protest. And really, what's exciting about this group is how diverse they are. And that bottom picture is, is, is the group that, that began this Intersections Club last year. And the membership within the Intersections Club has grown tremendously. And they continue to meet every Friday over Zoom with, with pretty much any student who's available to join them on Zoom on Fridays. And so, they're doing phenomenal work. Our Black Student Union is also going to be a new club that is formed by Kalise Winter, who is a Rising Senior, and she's also a Boston student. Our Unified Arts Initiative is, and an arts initiative to provide sort of a sense of inclusion around, around the school building. Tracy Dunn, who is an art teacher, has partnered with Michaela Francois, who is, who is also Rising Senior and a student in our, in our MEKO program, to really introduce some new art that could be placed in and around the school that speak to sort of students' experiences, their identity. And of course, they are also partnering with the Intersections Club to put up country flags in the high school. So, the Intersections Club conducted a survey last year where they surveyed all students, and we found that there are over, well over sixty countries that are represented in our school community. And so, we are working with Principal Mistrelor at the high school to order those flags so that it is ready to be seen when school reopens. Second to last, our roundtable discussions, which our first discussion actually occurred about two weeks ago, was again, a discussion that was widely attended. And again, all student-led, you know, really just engaging the community, engaging students, engaging parents around anti-racism work and having those uncomfortable conversations about race, about equity, and of course, you know, allowing our students of color to really have a voice at the table and to share their experiences. I know the student leaders are already gearing up for another roundtable discussion, and so, I won't share too much about, about what they have installed in the coming weeks. And then, lastly, Raising the Bar is a very brand-new initiative that myself and a Concord parent by the name of Bianca Taylor have started. Raising the Bar allows students of color to hear from and interact with the voices of people of color on success, overcoming challenges, of people of color on success, overcoming challenges, and following your calling. The mission of Raising the Bar is to shine a light on possibility and to cast a long shadow on stereotypes and limiting ideas about race. We held our first discussion about three weeks ago with a gentleman by the name of Clinton Killian, who is an attorney based out of California. But Clinton actually grew up in the South. And so as you can imagine, he had a lot of experiences to share with our audience. And if folks are interested in sort of seeing that discussion, it was recorded, and I can definitely share that out to the community. We have our second Raising the Bar series actually next week, and that information will actually be shared out by the end of this week. And we have a, a, a leader, I guess, in the, in the industry, in the food services industry, as well as the diversity, equity, and inclusion sort of world, who will be talking with our students and with anyone really, about sort of her experience around this work. And so more information to come on that. All right, community engagement. Promoting a welcoming and advancing dialogue on race, equity, and anti-racism efforts in our schools and in the community. I believe that, you know, over the course of the, really over the course of two years, we've done a lot to really engage the community in this work as well. I think my first year, we held a community screening called On the Line: Where Sacrifice Begins, which was a MECO documentary that was produced by a MECO alum by the name of Mike Maskell. Now, this film is actually available to the public as well. And I'll be more than happy to sort of share that, that, the, the link to this film to anyone who's interested. Our Concord Carlisle Human Rights Council held their annual Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration back in the early winter, and we had our keynote speaker by the name of Ron Jones, who has a, a small theater company, and he sort of travels all around the, the country. And, you know, his message really was that, you know, as a MECO district, you know, we are sort of part of a historic legacy of school integration. And he really, you know, spoke about folks, you know, coming to this event and sort of rediscovering the grassroots movement that brought students of color from Boston to the suburbs at the peak of the civil rights movement. And so I'm hoping that we can actually invite Ron Jones again in the, in the near future because he did a phenomenal job in his presentation. Let's see here. We also host our annual multicultural food festival, which is widely attended. And this is really enlarged, made possible with the efforts of our student government and Mr. Ray Pavlik as well, who's a teacher at CCHS. I talked a little bit about our Celtics Playbook Initiative. In addition to training students, last year, we actually invited community leaders, parents, and teachers to sort of engage in this work with us. And, and for us, myself, Gretchen Carr, and, and, and Principal Cameron, to share with those, those, those adults, the work that we are doing around the Celtics Playbook Initiative. And I think, you know, given, given how successful the night went, I believe that we can expand this training to the community as well. We also have Dr. Paula Martin, who is our instructor, and she runs the Can We Talk series through the Concord Carlisle Adult and Community Education. And I know this is a class that many folks in the community sign up to attend and have found it to be very time well spent. Mr. Joy was another programming we held back in, I believe, March. And again, this is just a great event that was made possible by MECO Headquarters as well as the Arts Emerson. Mr. Joy is a play that explores issues of race and class in America. It is written by a poet called Daniel B., and it is directed by David Dewer, Dower, excuse me, and performed by Deborah Walton, who is literally a one-woman show. She's the only person on stage, and she goes through about nine different characters, again, all around the issues of race and class in America. It's a phenomenal, phenomenal show. And I believe actually that our multimedia network, our, our TV network, actually recorded this play. So I believe there is a video out there to share with the community. And then, as I mentioned earlier, our Intersections Club continues to hold radio segments called Cue the Culture through our WIQH radio station. And folks can actually search WIQH in Google, and it's the first link that will come up if you go under the sort of schedule lineup for the radio station. All, all of their programming specifically for the, specifically for the Intersections Club is noted on their website. So the, the students in the Intersections Club are doing phenomenal work as well. And then this is just, you know, three sort of pictures that, that I found. You know, one picture on the far left there is Mike Maskell, who is a producer of On the Line: Where Sacrifice Begins, and Mike Maskell is a former MECO student of Lexington. The picture in the middle there is the night of our annual Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration. And the gentleman to the right is Ron Jones with our Concord Carlisle Human Rights Council chair members, Shari and Louisa. And of course, the last picture there is of our Multicultural Food Festival, which hopefully will occur again, hopefully in the, in the spring of 2021. So, thank you.
So I'm just realizing that we, we left one event off in June, right after George Floyd, George Floyd's murder. We had evenings for parents online with a lot of great colleagues, Lori and Andrew, and Paula Martin, and Jean Topson Grove. And they were evenings structured on how to talk to your kids about race in, in a way that they can really hold on to. So we did them in developmental levels. So, questions?
Yeah, thank you very, very much, Kristen. Thank you very, very much, Andrew. I think what you're going to hear from us is how impressed we are with the, the broad-based efforts that are so required for systemic change. I think you're going to hear that we're impressed not only with the adult-initiated work, but really impressed with the student-initiated work. And at the same time, personally, I want to say, I don't want to be too, too impressed because I think you're here asking for continued support, and these efforts are going to deserve a lot of continued support. This is, you're capturing a moment in time for us, and it's one that's hugely encouraging. I've got a couple of questions for you later on, but I'll wait on those if others have, have remarks.
Court, I just also want to say, I, I don't think we mentioned the community chess, but, you know, our speaker series this summer was completely supported by them. So all of our community partners have been so generous when it comes to this topic. I think everybody wants to see change and improvement. And, and in the topic, I'm, I just feel that we're moving forward with a lot of support.
Thank you. Can we open it up to the committee? Observations, comments, questions?
Yes, I, I had a question. I wanted to commend you guys on a lot of, of great work done. And also say that the Round Table Discussion, I was so impressed with the students participating there, how wonderful they, how eloquent they were at presenting the challenges that they meet and, and, and convey the messages to the wider community. I, I had a question. I know that, you know, success for students, and I'm speaking about high school students, about the region. So success for students really is, is not just the school, but it's also the, the mentoring of the families and the structures that we are, you know, that we are providing and the institutional knowledge that comes from, from success. And are, are you guys connecting with other community members to, to find opportunities to mentor our students of color, to show them the paths that, that will be open specifically to them or, you know, their, their approach in, in that sense?
Yeah, I can, I can, I just want to point out one thing, which is that often our MECO program is equated to our students of color. So in, in our school system, we have about 16% of our population who identifies as non-white. And our MECO population is not that entire amount. So it's, it's pretty equal, but based on if somebody's a Concord or Carlisle resident or if they're a Boston resident. So, you know, we have, and we'll have Andrew talk about the, the opportunities available through the MECO program. And we've also recently, I would say in the last two or three years, really worked to include the kids who identify as people of color through those programs.
Yeah, and to your, to your question, Eva, in terms of mentoring, I think that is one area that I, that I feel that we can definitely expand on. And I think, you know, in my conversations with the Concord parent that I, that I mentioned, Bianca Taylor, I think that's, that's really our goal for, for the Raising the Bar Initiative, is to provide some, some way where not only are the adults sort of mentoring our students of color, but also find a way where we can create a network of students who come together on a monthly basis. Because our initiative actually is going to run twice a month. But to, to have a space for those students to come together on, on a bi-week, you know, bi-monthly basis, to share, you know, experiences, you know, their thoughts around their futures, perhaps, and really begin to, to work with those students. In addition to that, I think, you know, one other program and ideas that I had, that I was hoping to actually start this past spring was a program called Mentoring Young Minds. And the goal was that, you know, we would take our students of color who are at the high school primarily in the 11th and 12th grade, who would go out to, to Alcott and really mentor our students of color who were at, at Alcott, and then possibly expand to Willard and Thoreau. I know the Teen Buddies program was in existence, in existence, and I believe the person that ran that programming has relocated since. And so, you know, I met with a teacher at Alcott by the name of Carrie Delaney to really begin thinking about ways that we can go about mentoring our, 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 our students. And, and we felt that starting with our young ones would, would probably make, make a huge impact. You know, just having an older student coming in to, to meet with a younger, you know, a younger child, I think, you know, speaks for itself. And I think the, the, the younger kids are, are being appreciated that, but.
Thank you. It sounds like a great program because, you know, the students that, there's, we often see that the same students that are doing exceptionally well and are, are offered leadership opportunities, right? So offering, you know, building up, offering more opportunities for students to, to feel reward, rewarded, and having those leadership opportunities for students that are in minority is, is, is a great, great idea. I hope it works out. Thank you.
Other comments?
So, this is Cynthia Rainey. I want to thank both of you for all this work. Am I listening to some of the broadcasts on WIQH? One thing jumped out at me, and please correct me if I didn't take, take away the right thing, but it seemed to me like curriculum and classroom experience was sort of the overriding theme. And in my mind, and again, I don't know that this is correct, but it seems like we need to take much more bold steps toward looking at our curriculum and training our teachers and all staff, in fact, than we have in the past. Because I think we thought we were in a much better place than we are, to be honest, with our curriculum, anti-race, anti-racism, and anti-bias. And I, as a person, can say, I need to do a lot of work in that area. So I just, you know, what were thoughts about this year? Because I, I don't think we can have a 10-year plan. I don't think we, we have a window and opportunity to address these things in a very bold way, I think, for all of our students. And I think your quote from the student who said, "We need to teach, we need to teach so that in the future, these things don't happen as frequently as they are now." So I.
If I can, oh, yeah. So, yeah, unfortunately, when I listen to those, the students' comments, I think, oh, boy, if they were only in second grade or fifth grade or eighth grade now, most of the kids that are talking are juniors and seniors in high school. So they wouldn't have experienced like the new trunks that I was talking about, the abolitionist movement. They wouldn't have experienced, you know, when they're looking at Walden Pond, the African-American population that was living there. They wouldn't have experienced many of the changes that we've already put into place. And, you know, very likely, if they were a junior and senior in high school, they would have gone to the elementary school or the middle school library and not seen books that really reflected them. And I, it's, so it's, for me, it's like, oh, you know, missed opportunity, but not to be missed in the future. So the kids who are experiencing those things now, I would say, are in the, in the younger grades.
And the only comment I'll have there is that it's not too late in high school, and some of our kids haven't gone through the K curriculum in Concord.
Yeah.
High school. So I think we need to, you know, make that a big part of the ninth-grade academy so that we do dipstick and, and figure out we are in a good place by the time. And I know we're doing that at the middle school too, but as I said, we have new students who come in at ninth grade, and it's, you know, not necessarily everybody's gone through our K curriculum.
Yeah.
Well, and I think that also speaks to the, the research that's been around for a long time that says beliefs about race are in place at the age of three, four, and five. So, yes, to Kristen's point, we can do some heavy lifting there, but to Cynthia's point, that, that doesn't give the high school a pass on, on these goals that the district has.
Yeah.
I, I think it's important to, to say, say it publicly here. If I'm correct, and I think I am, Andrew's work, Lori's work, Kristen's work, that of many, many educators and many, many people in the community, is not new, and their commitment is not new. Although we have been affected and horrified by recent events, that's true. But why are we spending more attention to this now, tonight, at the school committee when we could say there's another crisis that, that is getting our attention? And my answer to that is, we've been asked to. We've been asked by this community to, to have a school committee pay more attention to this. So, yes, it's coming from the, the long commitment of Kristen and Andrew and Lori and the strategic plan objectives, but the extra time and attention, which is very necessary, is also in response to. is also in response to a community demand for that attention. And so, I want us to recognize that.
Really, Court, I would just add, they're simultaneous crises, really. So, I think that's the other reason.
Thank you. Yeah, yeah. I want to ask a question. I don't know if this is a school question or a personal question. I guess it's both. If we're going to encourage people to think differently and believe differently about how we can appreciate differences, and if some of that work starts with acting differently, so that we create our own evidence that acting work, acting differently toward others works, and it benefits us, then we begin to truly think differently. So, if that's true, then those of us with a lot of work to do, myself included, are going to, are going to make some mistakes along the way. White students are going to make some mistakes along the way. Black students are going to make some mistakes along the way. Certainly, teachers are going to make some mistakes along the way. How are we supporting them and giving them some, some, what's the word? Some space and some support to, to do this work and stumble and get up again? Because some people might consider it a pretty scary time to get called out on, on our inadequacies around respect for differences and how we manage our relationships and how we put forth microaggressions and don't even know it. How do you help us? How do you help other educators to have the, the courage to step out more than they have and go where you're encouraging them to go?
Yeah, I would say three answers, and then everybody else, please jump in. The first is, I mean, we're, we're changing culture here. We're turning a huge ocean liner. And just to give you a little example, all of our professional development on cultural competency is optional. So, people sign up for it when they're ready for it. And that's really important. And as I've watched over whatever it's been, six or seven years, you know, there were the tried and true people who signed up for it right away and went to everything, and they're still there. They're still on the bus, turning it. But what I've seen from our faculty and sign up in professional development is more and more people, who I would have classified how you were sort of classifying yourself, like, I have a lot to learn, you know, and I'm a little bit scared, and I'm scared of making mistakes. I've seen more and more of those people feel safe and sign up for our, our professional development, our committees and so forth. So, to me, that, that's like, oh, the ocean liner is kind of, it's, it's moving. You know, it's not going to happen overnight, but it's definitely moving. The second is, you know, I, I think, I can't say enough about our hiring practices. You know, what we've learned in hiring more teachers of color is that you have to give yourself a bigger window to hire people. So, you know, you can't hire someone in like a month if you want to activate all these networks that we have plugged into. You got to give yourself like two months or something like that. Because if you hire in a short window, you tend to hire people who you already know, like student teachers or tutors or something like that, because, because you know them. And then sort of to give us, so just having more people at the table, more educators at the table to have these conversations, I think, is going to really help us make that, make that shift. And then the last piece is to really support our educators. I mean, Lori and I were just talking to some educators today. They really, really want to grow in this way in their curriculum. And that's going to take some, some risks to do it, so we want to do that. The last piece is really around, I think, what you said about, how do you, how do you allow people to make these mistakes? People are going to make these mistakes, especially kids. And it would be called restorative justice. That's in the literature what it's called. But basically, you have consequences. You acknowledge that it happened, and then you have consequences. Who did I hurt by whatever I said or, or did? And how do I make amends for that? And that's basically the underlying tenet to restorative justice. So, you know, adopting more of those practices as we go along, I think, will do a lot. But I, I agree, it's emotional. No one wants to be called a racist, and it's really hard to do.
I'll simply say, I'm impressed not only with your answers, but with your facility with the answers. You were ready for that. Thank you.
Court, I'll just add on, to be able, to, to realize we're starting to create a place where the kids feel safe enough to speak so authentically to us, I am so taken by their words to us, which are, it's so much better to have the conversations and not get it right all the time than to not have the conversations at all. So, the fact that we're creating space where they can say to us what you're listening to them say on the radio, I'm like, still processing sometimes this summer with, with what, you know, it seems like we're creating a community that wants to be part of these discussions. And we are going to make mistakes, but that's better than pretending it's all great when it's not.
Do you have, do you have a date yet for the next roundtable?
So, I do not. Again, you know, part of my involvement with the student leaders is I'm really there to, you know, almost be a cheerleader, just cheering them on. They really are the ones that are doing the legwork on this. And I try to leave myself out of it. So, whenever they are ready with a date, I'm sure I'll get a FaceTime call for them to let me know. But I do know that they are, they have already sent me a very rough draft of, of what they plan on, on discussing. And, and this, you know, this roundtable discussion is going to involve even more students, which I'm excited about, students who listened to them that evening and reached out to, to those student leaders and, and, and just, you know, they want to be part of it. And so, I'm sure, I'm sure they, I'm sure they have a date in mind, but once I know, everyone else will know as well.
They did a phenomenal job with it.
Other comments?
I want to thank Lori, Kristin, and Andrew and everyone involved. This is very dear and near to my heart. And I, I get really emotional whenever I'm involved in this conversation because it's something that I have lived throughout my entire life, being on the receiving end of discrimination and having very involved in this. Because you never get over, because you live with it day in and day out. And I think, as hard as it is for me, I'm in a better place than so many others because I tried to change it. It's still hard, but I, I tried to change it. It helps me sleep a little better at night. But my concern is about those that are not speaking, that are afraid of speaking, or they just don't want to fit in. So, they don't want to talk about being different or being discriminated against. Kristin, you and I have had many conversations over the past few years. And I, I, I would like for us, I'm, I'm really impressed. I'm really happy and encouraged with what we have been doing. But I, I think what is missing is, is this conversation with the parents. Because there are, Eva said, there are these leaders that are stepping up and taking leadership roles with all the different initiatives. But my concern is about those children who don't even realize what is happening to them. They are internalizing this and normalizing this and growing up with that complex of being different or being less than the other. How can we bring those in? And these are all optional programs. How can we find a way to reach these families, whether they're parents, their, their children, and bring them into the conversation, start asking questions? And Court, when you ask about, you know, how can we start to act differently? Let's get to know our community. There's a lot of discomfort around minorities in, in this town, and it's very welcoming. I, I stayed here because I've, I've been welcomed. But I still see and feel the discomfort. We are afraid to ask the questions. We are afraid to hear the answers to those questions. So, I encourage everyone in this town to start asking questions, getting to know these families that are, that are different, that are immigrants, children of immigrants, or low income, instead of looking at them as a tax burden versus, you know, taxpayer. Let's get to know these families, know their stories, and see what we can learn from them, how we can better ourselves from these different people that we think are inferior to us. So, that would be a first step. That's missing, that's missing in our, in our community. And I, I would like to, to see that wall fall down. And it's, it's, we are very blessed to have this diversity in our community, but we are not allowing it to give us its full potential. And there's so much to say about this, and we have so much work to do. And we are on the right track. And I'm very hopeful and very encouraged, but it's extremely difficult and painful that everybody should know that. Thank you.
Fatima, what you say is so important. And I just have, you know, a concept that I want to share. I think you already know it, but since this is being broadcast, Concord and Carlisle are predominantly white. And so, 84%, right, of our students identify as white. And so, there's this concept that's really helpful and been helpful to me in Being Brave, which is the concept of allyhood. And so, I, I know now it's my professional responsibility, even as a white woman, especially as a white woman, to stand up and say something when it's wrong, when something's wrong, when there's a practice or a policy that's wrong, and not wait until a person of color or a, a person who's been marginalized because of religion or ability or any of those things waits to do it. Because in this society right now, I have more power. So, it's not just that, you know, I'm standing up, I'm standing up for, and sometimes. And I know this is the, the idea that's taught through most of our professional development, is that, you know, we don't want to wait until a black person says, there's a problem with this particular issue or how something's implemented. We need to be able to recognize it and stand up and be allies and speak for those who are marginalized. And, you know, you're just making me all upset about this. But I've had some really encouraging data to share with you. In June, right after the, the murder of George Floyd, we held those two parent nights that I talked about. We did them five days after, five days. And within that time, for the elementary one, we had about 100 parents who signed up and took that course. Within five days, I think they changed their schedules just to come to that evening. And then similarly, for the secondary, I can't remember the exact numbers, but I thought, this is such a sign of what an opportunity we have right now. Like, all of us have been working on this for so long, but right now is the national spotlight on us. So, we have that, that opportunity. And similarly, you know, the course that Andrew mentioned, the Can We Talk series, Having Difficult Conversations About Race and Culture, that's been taught now twice by Dr. Paula Martin in Adult and Community Ed. I think that's widening the community conversation. And what I've seen through both of those is that there's a real yearning to have more of this. So, I, I love your comment. I feel like supported and encouraged to keep going.
Thank you, Kristin. We, I think, as a school committee, I can't speak for the entire committee, but I'll, I'll guess that we will not require hours of your time each month to continue this dialogue. But we will ask for continued dialogue, albeit briefer, because keeping this right in front of us is, I believe, important. I suspect the committee does. I, I know you do, Kristin, I know you do, Andrew. You've been rather explicit about it, as you should. So, I don't think we're going to demand lots of your time because we learned tonight how you're spending your time. And you're spending your time in, what, you know, 100 different arenas with 100 different groups. So, that anywhere you look in this school district, you're going to see efforts being made that are, to your point, Kristin, sending messages about expectations, about hopes, about a, a very intentional cultural change effort. You know, you're, you're not, you're not timid about saying it. And in so doing, you're implicitly asking the school committee for its continued support. So, thank you for being so, so generous tonight and so thorough in, in your, your report and for allowing us to dialogue about it. We appreciate it.
I'll jump in quickly and agree with you, Court, in, in terms of what we're asking for and our support, and anyone who knows me knows I'm extremely supportive of all of this work. I think the last thing that we want to put out there is the opposite of what we're asking you to do and put it out there that we are open to support you in whatever way we can. So, please let us know what we can do for you in these efforts and how we can support this. I think that, I'm guessing I speak for the others on the school committee, that we want to know how we can support the service. So, please keep us posted and, and let us know what we can do as committee members.
Fatima, we desperately want our kids to grow up and live happy lives. This is part of the work.
And I'm here to help with that.
Thank you. We know you are. Thank you. With that, I think we might turn to, we'd love to hang on to this even longer, but we'll be back to it. Kristin and Andrew, we thank you very much. While, I think we might move on.
Yeah. I think we can move on to budgets. Lori, you kick that off, or is Jared jumping right into it?
It would be me.
I think Jared's been waiting for his turn. We're going to let him jump in.
Well, budgets don't feel very important after that.
They are. Without those, none of the rest of it happens. So, don't, don't, don't pull yourself up.
For once, you don't have to try to steal the show.
All right. Can you see that?
Yes.
Okay. That's too many screens. Okay, so I'm going to be brief. So, we're just continuing, did I lose you?
Yeah.
I think it takes a little prompting tonight.
Okay, so I'm going to, I'll be fairly brief tonight. It's just a continuation of the, the budget conversation. My computer doesn't work. There we go. Okay, so if you remember, as of 7/27, our budgets were for CPS $40,777,193, which was 5,600 less than the old budget. And then the Concord-Carla budget was $35,144, just under $301,000 less than the FY '21 old budget. Also, at the time, our projected revenue was $325,000 less than the budget that was voted in the, in December. I reduced Chapter 70 by $200,000 and Chapter 71, Transportation, by $125,000. What I wanted to do, I was getting a number of questions this week about just some of our revolving accounts and the CARES Act money. And this is all always in my budget books, but this is right here. But this is, right here is the actual revenue we received in FY20 for CPS in these accounts, when I'm estimating next year and then preliminary ending balances. As you can see, Circuit Breaker is only 545,000. I'll explain how I think that's going to be a little bit higher. To date, I'm estimating these amounts for the CARES Act. At the FinCon meeting last Thursday, Kerry LaFleur reported that of the 1,600, 1.6 million, $92,488 and allocated at that point to the CPS. What that is, is 78,000 was spent in FY20 for COVID-related expenses that they identified. And then they gave us another 14,000 for FY21 COVID-related expenses. The 78,000 will then become available once they move that money to the grants. And I will move that 78,000 to Circuit Breaker to increase that. And then the 14,000 and any additional monies that they had planned to give us, we'll have a conversation with them. Here is the grant periods. This 468,000, that should look familiar. And here's the DESI Emergency Relief Fund that I pushed off to FY21. And it actually, there's a deadline there of '22. That's an error. So it goes, so that goes until '22. That is the only one that's really not restricted. I can use that for a lot more than I would on the CARES Act money. Same thing at the high school. Here's our revolving accounts. Here's what I'm estimating is the ending balances. As you can see, Circuit Breaker is extremely healthy there. We were able to put back food services. It's about three months worth of expenses, give or take. I do have TBDs here because I don't know what to expect for next year. So I left that to be determined. Parking lot down to 25,000, et cetera. And here is just the numbers that you saw before. The FY21 Old General Fund revenue versus the presentation on the 27th to what I am expecting now. The only difference here is in Chapter 70. Everything else has not been updated or is updated, and that's what I'm estimating. Here is the CARES Act money as well as the emergency relief. This 26,263 is actually based on Title I funds. So that's the formula that we, that we received. So that was what we expected to get. Okay, so if you remember, at the high school, we prepaid 611,806 in tuitions as well as laptops. I just wanted to remind you all of that. So currently, our, our gap for the Concord Finance Committee is 310,000 over their guideline. But because of the way that the assessments work, the real gap is 432,333. If you remember. Yep.
To quickly put this into context, this is not the traditional guideline of the FinCon. This is indeed something that happened less than a week ago.
Correct. So this was from last Wednesday.
Thank you. Okay. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Sure. So the reason why the number isn't 310 is due to the assessment formula. In addition, if you remember, I, we reduced the regional budget by 300,000. But because we reduced the, the revenue by 325, we still had to make up that delta. So that 24,000 and change really became 36,000 and change. So my recommendations to close the gap, the first thing would be to increase the Chapter 70 by the amount that we're expected to get, which is 247,217, more than what I presented on the 27th. My next recommendation would be to create a budget offset in our general fund of 185,116 against the COVID-19 CARES Act monies. Other recommendations could potentially be tuitions and laptop. Those are not my first recommendations. The reason is, is because this is one-time funds and we can remove that from our budgets a little less easier than, than the tuitions in the laptop lines. So that would not be my recommendation. Here is the budget as of 7/27. If you see right here, you can see my state aid is the 2.5 million and my budget number is 35,144,038. Here is the assessments as of 7/27. This 712,155 was last December about 688,000. So we had to make up that delta. Because of the revenue, that number went up because our revenue estimates were down. So here is the revised budget with the increased Chapter 70 and 185,116 offset. Here is the increase in Chapter 70. And here is the decrease in what our budget number will be. Here is what the assessments would look like. Concord overall, if you include debt, is 1.73%. But the number that they want to get down to under 3% is this comparison with, without debt. Carlyle would further benefit. They actually do include their debt service in their numbers, I believe. So they would have an overall decrease assessment by 2.86%. And then overall assessments are going up 0.6 or just under, under that. And that is the numbers. Sort of short, but I think most of you are familiar with them and I welcome any questions.
Clarification. The Chapter 70 number at 2.7 is, that number is a, that's not a firm number from the state. That's just an indication of that we've, I mean, you can explain it better than I, we've heard about it. But it's really not, I would not view it as a reliable number yet. Can you explain?
Sure. So it hasn't, it hasn't gone through the, the, the full.
Jared, could you stop screen sharing? There we go. Thank you. Sorry to interrupt you.
Sure. I, yeah, I have too many screens here. So the governor's budget has not come out yet. They did, these numbers were released. In normal years, with a huge increase, I would not necessarily say that they're reliable. In a year like this, even though they do have a number of steps to go through for an approved FY21 governor's budget, that might not happen until October, many of my colleagues and many of my roundtables are going with this updated number. They feel that, and I believe Mars as well as Masbo, but more Mars, feels that this number will hold. It is only a slight increase on FY20's numbers, so it's not a huge increase. But there is some risk with it.
The commissioner was very encouraging today with the superintendent, so I would support what Jared just said.
But just to rephrase that, we're somewhat confident that we'll have that Chapter 70 money.
Yes.
Which would easily close the gap and more.
Which would help close the gap.
Because you have, right now, what is your budget line, Adam, for Chapter 70?
It went from 2.5 million to 2.747 million.
Okay, so that is the expected number. Can, can, so a couple of things. I don't see the MECO monies anywhere.
Oh, that was in there.
Can you, I missed on the slide then.
Sure. So we are expecting about, at the high school, about 390,000. Let me pull that up. And we offset that, offset that with salaries. I believe it was about 190,000 that I spoke about in my 20, my presentation on the 27th. And the rest is in transportation. So we are expecting, it's at the, at the, yeah. So we are expecting about 389,000 at the high school for MECO grant. And then at CPS, we are expecting the same amount, oh, I'm sorry, 396,000.
396 region for CPS.
So Jared, what did you send it to me after this? I do have other questions and I just, you know, we can, we can. Still a little confused about the revenue at both. Yeah.
Yeah, and I'm looking at my other sheet. I put this presentation together. I got all these numbers today and I might have, I might have identical MECO numbers for both by mistake. So I'm going to update that and I'll send that out as soon as this meeting ends.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jared. So we're faced with, on the one hand, a need for greater flexibility with the budget and any other resource we have, non-monetary, so we can adapt, we can accommodate changing circumstances. And at the same time, we're being asked by Concord now, Carlyle earlier, to look at the potential cuts from our original budget. So we've got these two tensions. One, we need the, the flexibility more than we ever have before. And the town understands this, but the town in its appropriately conflicted position on this is also looking for some reductions because they have their own revenue concerns. Would that be an accurate, simple summation of where we're at today?
That's fair statement, yeah.
So just a kind of high-level question. At a high level, it seems to make sense if we're confident about this CARES Act money and the Chapter 70 to, to offset the budget appropriately so that we are trying to hit those town goals also. I guess my question is if, of course, they're not guaranteed. And of course, there's some risk every year, but this year seems a little riskier. What is our contingency plan? Or do we have a Plan B if we offset the budget that way and then that money doesn't come through? Then what do we do, just so that we're prepared for that possible eventuality?
So when it comes to revenue, you can't spend more than the general fund amount, but you can actually get less revenue than the general fund amount as long as you have E and D to cover that. So E and D.
Okay. So basically, our E and D is our contingency fund.
And what I do is, you know, through our cherry sheets, every month, Ian and I sit down and we update our revenue estimates. This is one of the years that we're not very conservative. We are expecting what we're reporting right now. And, but every month, every quarter, we go through it. And if I know we're going to be short, I prepare for that. I can, you know, freeze the budget if I need to, to end. If we're $100,000 short in revenue, I can plug that hole by ending the general fund by 100,000. There are things that we can do to plug that hole. Circuit Breaker is also, that was 1,065. That's a huge contingency. That is the absolute max. So we, and as you saw, food service, athletics, they're healthy at this time.
Right. And of course, this year, just to keep it all, on all of our radar, contingency is important because so much is unknown and unpredictable. But given that with E and D, I mean, we do, that's certainly enough to cover this difference if Chapter 70 didn't come through as predicted. Then we just have to hope we don't need the E and D for something else.
Well, we'll have about 1.6, 1.7 in the E and D million.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Sure.
So I think we need to discuss what actual decisions we'd be making tonight. Is it a overall budget reaffirmation, if you will, or adoption of a new budget? Is it, is the, is the town request answered within that other decision? What would be an appropriate approach? I'm not sure. What are your thoughts about that?
Go ahead.
We don't need.
I was just gonna say, these numbers, so I did work with Kerry and we just made sure that our numbers jive, that I knew exactly the number that I needed to get to. I always, and I, our auditors would be happy with any type of vote for this, but because you're lowering the budget, technically, you don't need to vote it.
Correct.
I guess I'll just follow up with a sense that we're still mimicking the typical process here. So next week, we're going to be at a hearing. We're going to go to town meeting with a request. I would feel better if there was a school committee vote supporting where we land here. I think it just formalizes a, really, we've redone the entire process from start to finish here since June. So I think it would be the appropriate ending to this, even though you don't need the legal vote. I think it would give us all good standing in terms of where we landed and what we all agreed to.
And what we saw tonight was a very helpful PowerPoint. The actual budget we would be adopting anew would be the one in spreadsheet form that was presented to us two weeks ago and again a week ago. Is that right?
These are the newest numbers, so you did not see those on Wednesday.
Okay, so we never saw those in the full spreadsheet.
Correct.
Got it. Okay.
So process-wise, then, once we have those, would we plan to take a vote? Are we meeting next week before the hearing? Will we take a vote right before then? Or do we, is it more helpful if we vote tonight, knowing we've seen the spreadsheets and that these are the edits to the spreadsheets?
So we would need to prepare the slides for the hearing. We clearly need to give you a number tonight if you're going to work to vote it and use what Jared suggested for offsets. You could vote it before the hearing. You have to have your own hearing next week as well. So that could be logical that you'd open it up to the community for feedback before you do that final vote, which we would then roll forward an hour later to go to the, the formal hearing at the town level. That all could sync up just fine. And we'll just do that one last round of discussion and put the voted number and, you know, the suggested voted number in front of you so you could finish it all next week.
So you'd need a pretty clear straw poll tonight.
Yes, Court, thank you. Yes. If we're going to make slides for 7:00 PM on Tuesday and you're voting at 5:00, we have to just leave here with a sense of what those slides should say.
So with that in mind, Jared, bring us back, if you don't mind, the screen share again to the, the two slides, one of which referred to the guideline effort on our part. And the second one that presented the two bottom-line numbers for CPS and region. I think those would be useful one more time.
Perfect. And I did, Cynthia, you have great eyes. I did correct the MECO number. So my apologies there. You're going to see a revised number for CPS, which is, this is the CPS 577, 507. We receive an actual in 549, 390 is what I'm anticipating. Okay.
Once you spot a thing for him to fix, he has to do it right. I've watched that. He cannot, not move on till he fixes it.
Okay, so starting with the region. Sorry.
Jared, I guess the, the first piece of basic is that we would recommend the monies come from the regional budget and we're not going back to look at CPS right now. We would recommend you vote, that line item budget would be the number we recommend.
Yeah. So the line item budget that you would be voting is thirty-four million, nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred and twenty-two. That would be CPS. I mean, that would be the region. And then at CPS, it is, so it would be that number right there, uh, forty million, seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand, one hundred and ninety-three.
All right, and these numbers, uh, got fleshed out in the earlier spreadsheets, but on the region now, the new number, uh, uh, will incorporate the, uh, the, uh, offsets, if you will. Uh, can you bring up that slide then?
Yep. So what I'll do is right in the line, as soon as we end this meeting, and if you vote it or want to see it, I can update the line item budget.
Thank you, there it is.
This one right here. Is that what you wanted to see, Court?
Uh, go back one. No, where was it? There you go.
Okay.
This, this references where we're going to find the reductions that generate the new bottom line that speak to the towns of Concord and Carlisle.
Correct.
Okay. And we understand the, you know, the worries they have and the sincerity of their requests, and we're, we've got to be mindful that, uh, this increases our jeopardy. Uh, it doesn't mean I'm opposed to it, but it doesn't come without risk.
I, uh, I agree with that, Court, and I, uh, Cynthia said many times, this, this is as good as it's going to look for a couple of years. At least. And, uh, I, you know, I, frankly, I was surprised at the request to lower this. And, uh, I think we've, you know, we are, we've heard an awful lot from townspeople about the importance of doing everything we can to, to educate kids in this very difficult time. And some of that's going to require money that we, over the course of this year, that we did not plan to expend, is my guess. Certainly, I think the risk is greater there than that we're going to, uh, end up here with some great big surplus. And I think it's going to be, as the reality sets in of what we're up against, I think it's going to be harder and harder to get, to get the community's attention if we, if we are running into trouble. So my, my inclination would be to leave the budget where it was. Um, I don't think that's where the committee is, um, but, uh, that would certainly be my inclination. I don't think I would make the total offset. Effectively, what we're doing is taking money from E and D. Doesn't look that way, the way we did the numbers, but that's the risk. We've just, uh, you know, through some good fortune, been able to, uh, remedy what was a problem there. And, uh, you know, we haven't been talking much at all about, uh, about, um, so much so that I can't even think of the word right now. Our, uh, hope. But, you know, that's still lurking out there. Not going to go away. And, uh, I just think that we are, I think we're being a little too, a little too quick to, to release these, these funds from the region. I did have one question, uh, it's, you know, somewhat important in my thinking here, but, uh, what is the expectation for our, uh, enrollment data for next year? Carlisle to Concord. Are we looking at another year where Concord's portion increases?
Yeah. And I have that. Um, David Modell actually did a great
Yeah, he did.
model of that. But it is declining for a few years. Let me find that.
Like a big class coming, uh, in like a couple of years.
I think that this, this income, the seventh graders of this year is, is a bubble year. That's a bigger, yeah.
That's only a year, but still, it adds up. They were there for four.
Well, and it's, it's a hit right out of the gate, you know? And then they, but I'm thinking about the Concord share versus, I'm thinking about the assessment piece. And does that affect us in a way that's going to be, I mean, you know, a couple of years ago, we had a really hard swallow for Concord on the assessment shift, and things were pretty good. And, uh, we bring that sort of thing to the table next year and, you know, this is, it's going to be hard.
That was a half-million-dollar
Yeah.
shift that was huge.
Yep. You know, I think, you know, as a regional district, you know, we've got, we've got some things in this equation that, don't exist at CPS. And CPS has been tight from the get-go, so, you know, we know, I know, we know, um, that there are other, there's another sizable pool of funds that if the community is really struggling to get to that three percent, two-point-nine-nine number that could be utilized. I would like to see at least some of, if this gap's going to get closed, I'd like to see some of it come from, from there.
From where? I'm sorry, Wally.
Free cash.
Concord free cash? No, I, I, I can't.
Cynthia, state your reasoning for me, just to help me understand.
Because it's Concord free cash. Unless we went to Carlisle and said, let's have Carlisle contribute some free cash, I don't think that's an appropriate ask.
Well, the only reason we're having this exercise is because Concord
I understand.
for the money. FinCom's asked for the money.
No, I.
Carlisle request.
I understand. I just can't support going to Concord free cash at this time.
Well, there's, there's a saying, the, the, and it's not apt exactly here, so forgive me, anybody I offend over on the FinCom. Uh, the, the favor of today becomes the must of tomorrow. We don't want to set precedent to say we're going to, uh, uh, start to strip away, uh, regional assets at, at the very time that we need them. On the other hand, I feel strongly that we have a really superior relationship with, uh, the, the town governments in Carlisle and Concord. And we can't predict the future, but, uh, right now, we, we do, uh, seem to be, uh, working toward some mutual ends here. What we have not discussed, and I'm fearful of doing this, uh, because I don't want to extend the debate a long time, but, uh, we're, we're debating this as if it's a, uh, a, manage this request or say no, whereas there might be something in the middle. I'm not advocating that, but I'm asking you all, is anybody asking us to do that exercise?
Is anybody asking us to do that?
Yes. To say, uh, we, we're, we're not going to, uh, take responsibility for, uh, a four-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-dollar cut that affects a, uh, three-point, three percent levy limit of Concord. We're not going to bear that, uh, solely at the district level, but, uh, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll help the towns move toward more austerity, uh, and, uh, more, more control over the, the levy, uh, increase. Is that a conversation we're going to have? I'm not going to propose it, but if we're going to have it, we got to start it now.
I might be more comfortable with a portion rather than nothing. I mean, it's, you know, it's over one percent of our budget.
So in terms of process, how would this work? It's just the timing and everything is so different than our normal town meeting structure. So we have a hearing, FinCom will not be again before the hearing. Is that correct? Or not?
I don't, I don't know what that's called.
Week.
What do our Carolina members think about this?
Can we go back, Jared, to the, um, to the, to the old, the old budgets that, but there are so many iterations, it feels at this point, but, uh, the screen that shows the old budgets versus these revised ones. I don't know, do you have the three, I guess, like, you know, what was? They're both for CPS and for the regional, yeah.
In this, excuse me, in thi- in this presentation or a previous one?
Anywhere, yeah. Here you had, I think, we focused mostly on the regional here, right?
So here is, this is the region, this is the voted, not voted, this is the one I presented on July twenty-seventh.
Yeah.
And this is the July twenty-seventh assessments. Here is the new budget with the new chapter seventy. And then the new budget. And then here is the new, um, new assessments.
And then the, the budget, the July twenty-seventh for the, for CPS's?
Yep. That was reduced by fifty-six-hundred.
Okay.
So, and, um, so that's right here.
Yeah. Yes, so I think, I mean, I think it's worth, you know, pointing out that, that the, a- a- all of that, the, most of that ask is being put onto, onto the region so that CPS can keep its budget as it was. I just think it's worth, worthwhile to acknowledge that.
Correct.
Like, it's not, it's, it's not that CPS is getting, is getting, and the, yeah.
The, the problem with CPS is contingencies, contingencies. We don't have those at CPS. We don't have, we're just a, uh, as you know, just a, uh, another department of the town. So we, the only thing we really would have is circuit breaker, as, as a contingency. We do have built in a hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar contingency in there, but it's a, that's a very tight.
Yeah. And I, I'm not, I'm, I'm, I'm not taking issue. Like, I just think that it's, it's worth reiterating that. And then what are the other town departments being asked to reduce by?
So when I watched the, and Cynthia, I, I know you watched it as well, um, the town, they reduced over six-hundred thousand in their lines, but they did have the middle school exempt number that actually brought that up by three-hundred-and-thirty-eight-thousand. So their delta was only in the threes, uh, because they had additional, um, loss of revenue due to that. But they cut capital, um, capital and health insurance were some of the big things for them.
Significant for, yeah, significant cuts there.
And Jared, what were the numbers that we've, of, of our, these current FY twenty-one budgets versus the old, uh, what, twenty-one budget? What's the delta there?
What is the delta? So, um,
Both districts.
It is this one. Sorry.
I just want to make sure that the number really kind of doesn't include the bump in, uh, chapter seventy.
Right.
And the production.
Let me pull up the, um, because I sent you all a report, uh, a, a line item budget that had FY twenty versus FY twenty-one new. I'm just going to quickly pull that up.
And just as a process thing, do we have a, are we arguing, are we discussing a recommendation or any, like, I feel like there's not even emotion, or? What do we?
I think what we, yeah, we don't have a, I mean, we're, we're doing what we probably should do in the action item, but that's okay. Um, the, uh, I think that we've got a proposal from the administration about if we, if we want to do this, please do it this way.
Okay, so.
I haven't heard of, and I think, you know, in the conversation we've had, I think this is, uh, being left up to us, and, but it should be.
No, I understand. So it's a, it's a, it's a line item from the CARES Act, right?
Yep.
And then, and what's the other item again? It is the,
It's the increase in.
The DUCI emergency fund.
Revenue by two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars, right?
The additional two forty-seven in chapter seventy and, uh, a portion of the CARES Act, funds that are unrestricted.
Yep. So we're pretty confident in that CARES Act number. We've discussed that, let's just say it doesn't come, then we've got an issue. So we're really just discussing the apportionment of the monies from the CARES Act. Is that correct? Kind of, sort of?
I think also, big picture, it feels like the discussion is whether we are sticking with our original budget or whether we are trying to fully or partially close the gap with the finance committee. Um, and, and one question I would have to try to at least narrow that down from a high level. And I apologize if you, if you said this at the beginning, Jared, because I was, my reception was coming in now a little bit. But my question would be, in terms of these numbers, and this comes back to what Wally just said, in terms of how we will do it, are you looking at these numbers as a recommendation that you are comfortable with, saying, here's a way we could close this gap, and I am comfortable with this new budget number and recommending it? Or, or is this, if we have to close it, this is how we would do it, but not necessarily recommend it? And so I, that would really help in terms of perspective.
Yeah. So my answer is simply, I would never propose something that I am not comfortable with. I, I feel comfortable. Uh, Wally makes a great point about chapter seventy. But I just, I know the budgets now, yeah, and I've done four in three years. So I, I know the numbers. I've seen, I've seen the years close out twice now. I, I'm, I'm very comfortable with our, our current position going into this. I really am.
Heather, I'll, I'll tell you where, thank you for saying that. I'll tell you where this takes me, and that is, uh, and I appreciate, Jared, your willingness to answer the question. Even though, uh, the politics are ours and the, uh, the technical wisdom is all yours. My sense of it, uh, is that if, we, we've stated we can do this. We've stated it heightens our risk, but it doesn't heighten our capacity to deliver for fiscal twenty-one.
Correct.
So maybe, so maybe the.
Assuming those funds come through.
Yeah, assuming the funds come through. So maybe the bet is, for lack of a better way to put it, that we, uh, gain the credibility of the, uh, fiscal watchdogs in both towns by doing our best to accommodate this request when we can, heightening our credibility should look dramatically different a year from now, and we say we can't. Or even have a big ask that, uh, that is, is painful for us. I think we've put ourselves in that place. I think we've put ourselves in that place, even though it goes against the grain to allow resources that we already have in hand for kids to go elsewhere.
And speaking of risks, I think that is one of the great risks. The fact that next year we could be coming back with a significantly larger ask.
Yeah, so if we.
Or maybe not, but depending how this whole learning process goes.
So for me, the calculation is, is the $400,000 additional risk to schools offset by the preservation of the credibility that we also need from all the players in both towns. We don't know. You know, that's a, that's a guess to a future with committees and boards that we haven't met yet.
I don't even know that I call it credibility. I think it's just, you know, we can, we're all dealing with a set of, with a set of assumptions right now that could change dramatically. You know, I've sort of nebulously said, what if we, you know, what if our expenses end up being higher than we anticipated? Here's a scenario. We know that it's 184,000 to test. Let's say we go to school in early September. Say we decide to do that. There's $184,000 pre-theres, has to be apportioned to the CPS, to the region and maybe, I'm going through this, Jared, could make that break down, but.
I have it.
Let's say we, what is it?
So it's, so our increase at CPS is $1,387,030. And then if you reduce the CP, the high school budget by the 185,116, the increase is only 271,189.
Yeah. But I guess what I'm, I'm trying to, we're talking about the original budget. So the 184,000 number is basically all of both districts, students and staff being tested at $45 pop. So the region piece is a good bit less than that. That number would be good to know right now, but let's say we, we go to school and a month from the day we start, the governor shuts it down. And that the experience that we see around the country is that the best way to get back in the building a month later, two months later, when we start to see a turnaround, is a full-scale test again, if not two. Because oftentimes, what we're seeing when somebody's trying to determine whether or not it's safe is two tests. So now we've, if it's, even if it's just one test, the expense to the overall two district budgets is now up to $370,000. And let's say we end up in the same situation before we come back after the holidays, for whatever reason. I mean, given the cost just of testing, we can find, if we find that, and we've just heard and we know from a number of surveys that it's very important to this community to keep kids in the buildings.
So Wally, let me just remind you that both towns have their own CARES Act monies. Carlisle does as well. And I'm, you know, our next conversation with the select board and with the finance or the select board is I think we should be exploring, talking about taking some of those monies and attributing them to testing.
But it's not a bottomless pit.
No, but it's $1.6 million.
I don't know, well, for.
Total.
Total, for the town, for.
Right.
I don't know what Carlisle's number is.
Right.
For the schools.
The testing is, should be a community conversation, not just a schools conversation. But I'll just, we're going kind of around in circles and it's 718. So do we have any kind of a, do we need a vote or you just?
We don't need a vote. We'll, we can do enough of the slides to get ready for next week. I guess one, just a couple thoughts maybe to end it on, just having lived the story with both communities to get to this point, and I just offer it as food for thought. Carlisle originally asked for a 5% cut, which landed as, correct me if I'm wrong, Eva and Sarah, landed as level funding for the Carlisle Public School. So they've already done their share of cuts. Initially, the, well, initially, the local revenues in Concord were projected to be millions of dollars short. They're landing on 1.6, Jared, as a projected decrease.
1.5, yeah, 1.6.
We're only being asked for 300,000 of that. So I do just frame that I think there's been efforts here to not have us take on even a full portion of it, knowing all the variables. I know it's hard because this is all money we might need for something. I totally understand that. I just thought the big picture might be worthwhile. There was conversation in Concord earlier that we would be asked to take an equal portion. We're not being asked that because they know how volatile this is. I feel like Carlisle's being really patient with us, letting the Carlisle School get settled and sort of waiting out what's going to happen here. And I, maybe I'm, I don't know, I've done this long enough here in these two communities. Think a little good faith doesn't go a long way. So I just wonder if we've got to, got to think that piece through because I actually anticipated this was going to be a much harder conversation this year than it's turned out to be. I know next year is a game changer, but we have E and D at capacity. We have circuit breaker at capacity. The money you're debating right now is money we didn't know we'd even have to discuss. So we are in as good shape as we could possibly be going into '22, knowing that this COVID money is in play in a way that we didn't expect. So I guess I just frame that and maybe we need a week to think on it. That's totally fine. We can get ready for the hearing and have you do a final decision, you know, right before, goodness knows I've been in worse situations than that around here. So I think it might be fair to give it some thought now that you've got all the moving pieces and heard our recommendations.
Before we delay it, I think it might be helpful just to take a straw here of, I mean, if the majority of the committee is prepared to meet this number, then, you know, I'm done talking about it. So, you know, let's, if, you know, there's a, better than 42 votes.
I think that makes sense. Let's see where everyone is.
I think we've heard Wally give us a lot of cautions. I think you've heard me share jeopardy but, concerns, but I'm prepared to support the request from the town of Concord. We've heard Lori, Jared, Heather.
I would fall in about where court is, given that Lori and Jared are comfortable with this. I want to red flag the concerns and the risk, but at the same time feel that with those red flags prominent, it would make sense to try to be a, I guess, a team player with the town and try to close the gap. Cynthia, Eva, Sarah?
Yeah, when I did my charting, the course, the Massachusetts School Committee thing, they pointed out the chapter 70 was more this year and the formula and all this. And that was back in September of 2019. But don't, you know, be careful, that's not a set in stone, that's not set in stone. The fact that they're still reaffirming that at this point, where very easily been something that I think, you know, was at least on the table for changing, makes me more confident in those, in the revised numbers that Jared put out, you know?
Yeah, and I had a quick question for clarification. How comfortable are in the money fund and the COVID, the CARES Act and those relief areas? Because the number, the other two items that were listed were the tuition, so special education tuition. So is that a prepaid? And also the technology money, right? So we are going to be heavily relying on technology going forward. So are we confident that we won't have to slide down the scale to the less desirable numbers? And if you can just clarify, are these prepayments? What is the special at tuitions?
So, yeah, we prepaid FY21s with FY20 monies. Those will now carry forward as sort of a contingency. And if everything goes to plan, I can go ahead and maybe do the same thing next year to keep pushing it.
But if something very unforeseen were to happen, you do have those funds in the lines that are available because you've already prepaid. So there's another set of contingencies there to get through the year.
Cynthia?
I feel very comfortable with the way Lori and Jared have framed this decision. And I think, I think it will make the '22 conversation a little bit easier, even though that's not our job to make things easier. So if Jared thought this was going to be a big risk or, you know, we should put a big red flag out there, then he would have told us. So I don't feel like, nothing's risk-free right now. So, but I think we're, as Lori said, in a good place for '21, so I would like to proceed with the proposal.
Heather and Wally, are you comfortable if we asked our two not-yet-voting members to weigh in briefly?
I don't think we should do that. Sorry.
Thank you. All right, I understand. I didn't know. Protocol. Thank you. So with that, is there a motion we would entertain, we should entertain about the budget?
Well, it sounds like we would probably go to meet FINCON's number, right?
That is listed on our action items, should we?
Yeah. So we could draw it when we get there. And Jared could just double-check the numbers between now and then. It makes sense.
Yeah.
We might move on to the policies. I know the hour's late. This might in fact be brief, these. Is that okay, Wally?
If it's going to be brief, I was going to recommend we move it to next week.
So we.
I know they're kind of time-critical.
Yeah, and these, I'm not going to call them boilerplate stuff because they're brand-new. But what I will say is that they've been disseminated far and wide through the Commonwealth as suggestions from the Mass Association of School Committees. I don't know if anybody can pull them up on our screens, but we have a very general policy, the first one in your agenda, that is simply called EBC Supplemental. EBC is a section policies under the broad category of safety. And what it does is, thank you very much. And you've all read this, I know, but the public can see it now. And what it does is simply outlines the fact that there will be COVID-related actions, perhaps numerous across many fronts, calendar, class size, attendance, time on learning, grading and retention, you're seeing them here, graduation, sped, discipline and suspension, that all could require a superintendent to bring forth administrative regulations and/or policy changes in order to protect kids and teachers and what happens for people in schools, including support staff. So it simply says that, this language is good here and representative, the superintendent may suspend or amend the current policy. And then it frequently says that there is an expectation that she'll bring this promptly to the school committee. Did anybody have any questions or concerns about this rather intentionally general policy that tells the superintendent, we understand that you're going to have to be nimble and in nimble administrative efforts, you're going to have to be equally nimble about keeping us informed?
I don't have a question, a question or a comment about that, but I am looking for clarification. I had a parent already reach out to me with a question about the supplemental policy, page number three, when it comes to the special education, the local graduation requirements and the special education right below that. They were not sure how those two, are those two statements related to each other? And how would they impact the students?
I think they're intended to be independent. Would you agree, Lori?
I absolutely would agree.
Yeah. It simply, simply says that the pandemic is going to have us confronting many unknowns and in light of that, remember this in accordance with guidance. Remember this, that the school committee and superintendent should be mindful. So some of these are traditional policy so much as, and you'll see another example of this, of pay attention is what some of these MAS C policies are saying to us.
Yeah.
Is that adequate for now, do you think, Eva?
Well, maybe I'll ask maybe for a little more clarification on the graduation and retention for the special education students because I know that the state is looking at removing the MCAS requirements for four years. So, you know, there might be some, some different impact that we are not foreseeing right now at the moment.
And that's, I think, why MAS C recommends these, to simply put us and the world on notice that we may have state edicts, for example, or DESI guidance that would have us go back to our original policies and have to say that the state is temporarily superseding them. I wonder if we might turn to the next one? This is our first reading. We're going to come back to this next week. Face coverings. And what this one does is really spells out very clearly MAS C's recommendation that is going to be put into school regulations and quite simply says what you, I think, would, certainly what I expected, and that is that people are expected to have a mask unless there's a CDC recommended or medical recommended reason why that wouldn't be the case and enforcement is expected. What's different in Concord, in Concord is that instead of saying, this was a help-me, Lori, a grade two and up, we said it's a K and up.
Correct.
Thank you. Questions, comments? If not, we're going to move to the next one. This is just a first reading, but we want to hear them now because they're coming back next week. Thank you for your forbearance here. Remote learning. So this actually, so far, we think in our analysis sits nicely with other policies that relate to internet use, digital expectations and restrictions and so on. And really simply puts forth in policy language, the fact that there is going to be remote learning.
Right.
And our study said there was no surprises in the language there. It's an affirmation of what's already happening. This one, this addendum, we thought was a little bit odd in our analysis because it's not a true policy. You can see where it starts. Issues to consider. And then some questions. So we decided that we, this one would be fine to bring to you and bring, bring to our actual policy handbook with formal adoption, but with one caveat, and that is because it's more advisory for, for administration and staff in the form of questions about what you should be mindful of, that our caveat was, this is effective so long as the governor believes, says that we're under a state of emergency. Because then it becomes sort of unnecessary after that. So those were the four. And if you have questions, bring them to us quickly in some form or other, no later pleased than the Thursday policy meeting. Did I get it all, Sarah, Cynthia? Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry that we're dragging this on. Glad we got through it. Thank you.
That was good. Thanks. Thanks for doing all that work. So should we, let's move on to action items. So should we, let's move on to action items. And we have staff requests, they're mostly, I'll just go through this. Can I have a motion that the Concord-Carlisle, I'm sorry, the Concord and Concord-Carlisle School Committees vote to approve the following staff requests to enroll their children in Concord Public Schools, Carlisle Regional School District for the 2020, 2021 school year, and the tuition be waived. Erica Reel, teacher at CMS, daughter to enroll in third grade at Willard. Jen Thistle, teacher at Willard, sons to enroll in fourth grade in Willard, sixth grade at CMS. Teresa Rogera, teacher at CC East, CCHS, daughter to enroll in kindergarten in third grade at Willard. And Patrick Cavane, reading specialist at Willard, daughter to enroll in first grade at Willard.
Second for both?
Thank you. Did you make the motion? Who made the motion?
Cynthia did.
Good, thank you.
Just a comment for clarification for new members. When somebody joins the Concord Public Schools, we are recognizing right now that they are able to join the Concord-Carlisle schools. And we thank them for their trust and faith in their own institutions that they contribute to, and look forward to being entrusted with the care of their children. So do we have a, let's have a roll call vote. Wally, do you have it in front of you?
Yep. Rainey?
Aye, for both.
Aye for both.
Wilson?
Aye for region.
Mustafi?
Aye for region.
Johnston, aye for both, and-
And if we wait a moment, Heather's going to rejoin us, if we can find her in the list.
I just, I'm back, thank you, can you hear me?
Yes.
I fell off, thank you for-
So, Litchy, we have a, we have a, we're going to unmute you. No.
Aye for both, if you can hear me.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are you going to join the executive session?
Okay.
Heather?
I'm going to try. I'm having trouble again, I keep losing my connection here.
Okay. We'll probably be able to survive if you can't, but just wanted to know whether they wait for you.
Okay.
So that passes, and welcome to the district for those students.
No, don't wait for me if you don't, I'll do my-
You're on your own out there in the wilderness.
Thank you, Heather.
Thanks, Heather. So the next, I don't know if, I don't have language.
I have it here, the-
You have it?
Do we have a motion for the following? The Concord School Committee and the Concord-Carlisle Regional School Committee will enter into an executive session under purpose-
No, 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 wait, 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 wait. Budget piece.
Try to vote for the budget?
We're going to vote the budget.
The budget.
Yeah, no, that's okay. We picked that up too soon. Do we just need to vote to approve the amounts?
I think so.
Okay. So can I have a, a motion? We probably should split these. I have a motion to approve this Concord Public School budget at the amount of $40,777,193 for fiscal year 2021.
So move for Concord.
Second for Concord.
And no discussion, I assume. So a roll vote, Rainey?
Aye for Concord.
Booth?
Aye.
Johnston, aye. Vote.
Aye.
Thank you. And can I have a motion to approve the Concord-Carlisle Regional School District budget of $34,958,922 for fiscal year 2021?
So I'll move that, if Jared can nod his head that we got it right, because I'm not looking at it. Thank you. So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. They better be right, Jared gave two minutes ago. The, so, not any discussion, I think we're probably finished there. Let's do a roll, Rainey?
Aye for the region.
Booth?
Aye for region.
Wilson?
Aye for region.
Mustafi?
Aye for region.
Vote.
Heather?
Vote. She's frozen. Heather?
We're waving at you.
Johnston, aye.
Give her a moment. Oh, you're frozen on us. We don't know if you can hear us, Heather. We're doing the region vote, which you straw-pold in support of. Can you hear us now? We want to be where he, she is.
Yeah.
She's gone. Okay. Well, I think we're good. We've got a, that's a majority, so, and a quorum. Corey, you want to do the executive session?
Yeah, having tried to do it earlier, my mistake, sorry. We'd entertain a motion as follows. The Concord School Committee and the Concord-Carlisle Regional School Committee will enter into an executive session under purpose three of the open meeting law, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and not to return to open session.
Move for both.
Do we have a second?
Second for Concord.
Second for Concord. Do we have a second for the region?
Second for region.
Second for region. Thank you, Sarah. And Wally, do you want to bring us to a close?
Sure. Rainey?
Aye for both.
Booth?
Aye for both.
Wilson?
Aye for region.
Mustafi?
Mustafi for region.
Johnston, aye for both. See you in a couple of minutes.
Couple of minutes. Thank you.
Especially for those intrepid 21 who hold on to the-